College meeting in order, stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Amendments to the agenda.
None for me.
Moving on. Approval of minutes over November 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 3rd.
Second?
Seconded.
Just have, no, this second, can I make a comment about?
Sure.
Uh, on the grant recipients there, where it said Cindy Pritchard and Judy Sutherland, if I could replace those names with Kevin Durkey and David Nelson and Michael Davidson, they're the recipients, and Cindy and Judy are mem- were members of the Economic Development Committee that were here.
Because they were here, that's why I thought.
Oh yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, and I, and I should've done a better job of, of explaining that at the, at the meeting. They, they were-
They were-
They're, they're the Economic Development Committee who are part of reviewing and passing them forward, so I just didn't want the record to show that they got a grant when they didn't.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody okay with those changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Uh, we have Mr. Charlton here from the Benson Select Board, um, to discuss police coverage, I'm sure. Is that it? You're on.
Uh, uh, what I hear, of course, that the Benson Select Board is interested in, uh, developing a contract with Fairhaven for law enforcement, uh, and, of course, it's gonna depend on how it works out with the police department, and what the cost is gonna be, because we only have a limited, limited amount of money. What we did before was three hours a week, random, it, their schedule, and the random part works really good, because then ones who like to raise hell in town don't know when law enforcement's gonna be around. And I didn't know whether it was something that you would be interested in. I do know you've got fixed costs, and those costs don't change whether you work in just in town or whether you're working out of town, and it does bring in some income in Fairhaven. So, I think it could be, something that could be mutually beneficial for both of us, and it would generate a little income for your police department, provide law enforcement for us, and, you know, it's not a perfect situation, but it's better than what we got now. This got to the point where, uh, they know there's no law enforcement, so it's the Wild West. And I haven't talked to Team Humphries about what it would be per hour, you know, probably up top, is it? Can't give us a figure, but, uh...
Is, is the thought that, uh, it's, that it, there would be, there's the fixed costs we have for the officers, more question, and then would there, there's some other added to that for, for the service, or just recouping the fixed costs?
All I can explain is how we did it before. I think it was two years ago, the Select Board made a decision, and they settled that, um, charging the town of Benson forty-five dollars an hour, and then I know it was scheduled to go up from there, and then the, the board, the time had decided not to renew the contract, and the contract expires, so, um, that's where it was. I know other agencies, you know, it depends on if it's overtime, or radio time varies between the mid-forties to sixty-seven, fifty an hour, depending on, you know, which agency's covering what.
So forty-five dollars an hour covered our costs, though we, it didn't cost us money to give them cover?
It didn't cost forty-five dollars an hour, no.
But do we have the capacity to provide that?
If you guys make the decision, I'm sure that we can do it, uh, but that's gonna be a decision.
We're not extra staff now, so...
No, we wouldn't be adding anybody, no.
We are not a for-hire department. How long does, how many times does that have to be specified, that we are not a for-hire department? Every time we go somewhere else, it costs us money. Our workman's comp was up, because workman's comp is figured on the sal- on the salaries that are being paid. There, they could get a hundred dollars an hour, and it's not gonna make any difference. We are not out, we are not a for-hire department. Are they gonna, are they gonna repair, are they gonna replace a car if our car gets smashed up there? Do they have insurance to cover our people that are up there? No. It's all on us. If they go up there and there's a problem with one of the police officers, and a police officer happens, God forbid he happens to get hurt up there or causes a problem, we're the ones that are gonna get sued. We're the ones that are gonna be paying workman's comp, not Benson.
And I, and again, we-
You're not a for-hire, and there's a difference between revenue and profit, and we do not make profit on it.
You can have your opinion, Jay, and I respect your opinion. I disagree with it. I believe there's nothing wrong, and a police department should have a revenue stream.
They'd go there if there's a problem.
And, and you gotta let me finish talking.
Jesus, I'm telling you.
And, uh, and having a revenue stream, there's a certain amount of liability, everything you talk about that happens whether they're up there or not. And I, I appreciate Mr. Charlton coming back here, because on our, uh, in 2019, it was a three-two vote not to increase the contract, and I think at that time I said, "If the makeup of the board changes, feel free to come back," because it isn't total, it wasn't unanimous. I think with the cost of what, and we're gonna be going through our police budget tonight, if we keep with this mindset that we can't make revenue as a police department, that we can't do for profit, I don't know how we can continue to maintain the cost to keep going up for our police department. So I think we have to at least be open for that discussion, Jay, that's all.
Forty-five dollars an hour will not take care of it. Right now, if Bill goes out and works for the highway safety program, he gets sixty-two dollars an hour. Correct, Bill? Because it's time and a half money. It's time, well, that's what it says on the paper.
No, but that's, that's the bill rate that we bill, that covers the workman's comp, covers FICA, cause of those events, but just for me, my salary, that's what it, what it, um, it covers. So if you look at the highway safety sheet, if it's a part-time officer working, we bill them at twenty-six dollars an hour, and that covers all the, the, the other fixed costs that come in there, if you, if you don't have time about workman's comp and, and FICA.
Twenty-six dollars an hour bill will not cover the cost of the car and the cost of a person that's out there working.
No, that's not, not what I'm saying, as I'm saying, that highway safety, that's what we get reimbursed for. So I was trying to, to explain the questions. Regardless of who worked, whatever you guys agreed on, if it was forty-five, fifty, sixty dollars an hour, that's what the town would be getting back. What I'm trying to explain is if, depending on who worked it, if it was a part-time worker, and it would be, if our cost would be just for the man, to twenty-six dollars an hour, we'd cover our full cost. So in theory, if you bill fifty, it's twenty-five dollars to the profit side, um, but then again, that's for you guys to figure out where, what you would think if you chose to do that an acceptable amount, and again, that's a vary depending on who actually works the, the detail up there.
I'll make a motion that we don't go into a contract with Benson.
Is there a second to that? I don't know if I can second that up. I don't really would if I could, uh, just to have the discussion go on.
All right, well, that's it. I'd like to hear a, a little bit more.
I'll, I'll second it if, if it's gonna bring more discussion. I don't agree with, with the motion, but I'll second it, just for discussion purposes.
Thank you. I, I, now that you said that, I agree, Jay, that we shouldn't be a, uh, for-hire department. If we, if we are, every time that we send somebody out of town, they're not here. I mean, that's the obvious. I don't mean it to sound stupid, it's just that we're not here. We're, our presence is not here. The town of Fairhaven budgets three or four hundred thousand dollars a year to protect the town of Fairhaven, and I don't think we can afford to go anyplace else on that budget. We're, it's tightened up as it is. If we have to hire a part-time, then I, I don't think we're, we're, I don't think we gain anything. I think what we do is we help Benson, and I, I, you know, we're, they're our neighbor in town, and it'd be nice to do that, but I think we, um, I think we lose our coverage here, and I, and I think we lose our focus here. That's my, that's my fear. I, I want us to be a town, town coverage, and, and I, I sympathize with you guys. I know, you know, I'm up in Benson enough to know that it ain't pretty anyplace, and Benson is just happens to be another town in Vermont. Um, and I know that you guys probably can't afford to have a full-time department, but it's expensive. And I think once we take somebody out of here, even for three hours a week, it's three hours a week they're not in Fairhaven, and I, I don't wanna see that. I, I think we should be a local police department.
I don't understand why you don't go to your own sheriff's department. That's their business. That's what they're there for, is to, for hire. I mean, we're not for hire. Rutland Sheriff's Department is.
A question for the chief, uh, if, if, is there a coverage concern, because I, after two officers working it sometimes, and then because-
Sometimes the way they're-
So you could, you, you don't leave, I just don't want the impression that we left Fairhaven all uncovered, because I don't-
So, when we did it in the past, we would, we didn't leave here to go cover up there. Um, we either did it, but we had two guys on, or I had a part-time guy come in and do an hour here and hour there. Um, to answer the part of Jay's question, is I know, again, I have not talked to the guy, a guy came in, and I didn't call him back, believe it or not. I said, I got word back to him, was if you guys wanna check, this is with the Select Board, not with me. But I, I know why, because when we did it, we would go for an hour, drive through and leave, and historically, and I've seen Wells now having the same issue, they hired the sheriffs, is they're there every Sunday from noon to four, and it's not working well. So that's what I think happened in Benson, why they originally came to us, every Wednesday, they knew they were there for three hours on Wednesday, that's why they keep coming back to ask me, and I keep kicking it to you guys. Um, so as far as coverage, no. We wouldn't be there. On the, on the negative side, the only time we go to Benson, we might leave us uncovered, is if we are backing somebody up, um, to have a full disclosure and a full picture. Um, if I was the only one working, and the state police asked for backup, then we would leave town and, um, under temporary.
That's a different story.
No, but I just was trying to get the full picture on, on coverage.
But you go up there for an hour, by the time you drive up there and come back, you're not in Benson for, you're not in Benson for thirty-five minutes.
And I agree with you, but that's what they were happy with, so...
I, I still feel we should not be doing it. The townspeople are very, very good about paying for, you know, they never squabble about our police budget, they never squabble about nothing, because they expect the police to be here in this town, not in Benson. And if there's an emergency and they have to go to Benson, that's one thing. But to be contracted with them, it's, it's crazy. It's just not feasible.
Is there any benefit to it, other than, to me, the financial benefit is minimal. You wouldn't even really see much from that. Being a good neighbor, you can say that. Is there anything that I don't know, that I should know?
Well, the only thing I go back, is, is that, when we did it before, we had, um, seven thousand dollars projected revenue, um, back in, so it does buy down the, the other side some. I know we have some expenses here, and our revenue's here. It's not huge money, but again, it is on the positive side, on the revenue intake.
Seven thou- you've been wanting to get in there, Jeff, go ahead. What, what do you?
Um, so I, I've kicked the idea, and thank you for letting me put my two cents in. Um, I've kicked the idea around for, for a few weeks, thinking about it, and, and I do really, I like the idea of, of the revenue, um, is, seven thousand dollars is not a lot, but if this, we can do seven thousand here, and five thousand here, and ten thousand here, it adds up. Um, but beyond that, beyond the revenue, which I do, which I do think is great, um, to stay consistent, I would ask the board, if Benson came and said, "We would like to contract your DPW to put in our culverts," how many, would, would the town say, "It's seven thousand dollars profit, let's send our guys down the road?"
I would say no.
And I would, I would, I would probably myself be against that too, because there is work to be done. Um, and I think for consistency's sake, if you, if you're not gonna send one department, maybe we don't send any. And that's my personal opinion, after putting thought into it.
I'll go back to the same thing. Taxpayers want coverage in this town. We didn't, we didn't start a police department for a higher, to go out of town and hire. If it, like I said, if there's an emergency, they go up there, fine, but it's not. The liability factor itself is just ridiculous. If we lose a car, seven thousand dollars doesn't even pay for a door. Come on. And I don't know why, it keeps, every year we go through this, every single year we have to listen to this. We've said no three times. I would think that should be enough.
We actually had a contract with them and said no in 2019, so we were, but-
They weren't there in nineteen.
It doesn't cost, it doesn't cost anything but time to ask, and it wasn't willing, it wasn't willing to have you-
Consistency-wise, though, when Benson, this year was not a normal year. When Benson does their hayride, and they ask for police help, what I can't understand is, we seem to have so much trouble, and we're not for hire, but yet we say yes, let's go. We are not consistent. To your point, if you're saying we wanna get consistent, again, I look at the cost of our police department, and we're getting up to three hundred and forty-two thousand for, for, for running our police department. I've talked to other towns and, and with police departments, and I say, "How do you make it work? Because the taxpayers, we can't, we can't handle it." You have to generate revenue, you have to find ways to, and it seems like, and my, some of my frustration, and I don't mean to bring it out at individual board members, because it's not, is the fact that it seems like every time we try like the devil's little speedway to get something to generate some revenue, to bring down that cost of the police department, we're not open to it. And I'm just saying, I think that's wrong. I disagree with the not for, not for higher police department. But that's just fundamentally, doesn't-
I understand it, but you, every time you go somewhere else, you gotta add. You don't make any money. I don't know who you guys think you're making money on those, because you're not. If it was a hundred dollars an hour, you still won't be making money, because if something happens up there, it's our liability. If we go up there, every time you put extra money out there-
Yeah, but-
-our workman's comp goes up, because of the fact, if your workman's comp is figured on salaries. You sit there and shake your head no, Glenn. The trouble is-
Go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff's trying to-
If you do it, I'm done. I'll tell you right now, because I'm not gonna go through this.
Jeff, what were you saying?
Well, I guess I look at the liability a little differently. I think you already have about the same exposure, and I, I don't think that it will be a significant difference in your workman's comp and that sort of thing.
Fair enough.
And I, I guess I would hope that it would be a part-timer that didn't take away from the coverage that's already in Fairhaven. And I guess I'd point, I would point the discussion more towards, if we, if we are talking about it, how much would it take to cover those fixed, those costs?
Well, and I think that the whole idea is that we've gotta, we've gotta get hold of somebody, we've gotta have a part-timer, if we assume that's what we should do, is a part-timer. You know, you've gotta schedule, you've gotta have somebody, you've gotta have somebody, or you've gotta kick one of our guys up there, one of our regular guys up there. I just don't think it's, I don't think it does us, it doesn't do the town of Fairhaven any good, and I, I've said this before, and we probably all repeating ourselves by now, so, I mean, if we're in Benson, we're not in Fairhaven, that's my problem.
I, I guess I'm not, um, I haven't decided if I'm for or against yet, but we're all talking about our feelings, basically. There's no real cost-benefit analysis or any facts to really make a decision on. You can take a guess at what workman's comp is, or, you know, how much an hour. Is it gonna have to be overtime? Is it a part-time person?
I can show you all of it.
So, you know, to me, it's just kind of-
It goes back to the thing that Jay's talking about with the highway safety. That breaks down your actual cost per manpower. So if that's what you decided, you know you're getting fifty dollars an hour back for those three hours a week, and then this is what your cost is. Um, again, so Dale and I were working today, and I said, "Dale, go up there for an hour," um, that, you already paid for that guy, so you're really getting a full fifty dollars back. Yes, we're losing that second guy in town for the hour, but if a part-timer came in, your fixed cost is, is whatever we decide we pay them. But I'll just use highway safety for your example. Fixed cost max is, is the twenty-six dollars an hour, and that's their hundred percent workman's comp, and everything in a, in a package. So that part is there. Um, so you're coming in, you know if that person works, you're making twenty-five dollars an hour.
And we charge a hundred dollars an hour for a part-time person?
You guys can do whatever, whatever you choose. So it doesn't change, it doesn't change to them. They get billed for a service. We, whoever I send up there, so that, that part doesn't change what we bill them. You set a flat fee, that's what we bill. The other part I was thinking about, and again, I'm only stating my experience, we did it two times now, was, they're pretty flexible. If you don't have anybody to work, they're not getting billed, because there's nobody to work. They just had a, it only became three, 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 uh, excuse me, three hours, because they had X amount of dollars. When you break that out, over fifty-two weeks, it averaged three hours a week.
That's how you go.
So one week, they might get two hours coverage, they may not get anything for two weeks, because you don't have anybody to work, and then one might, they might get six, depending on-
So in other words, if you bump up, let's just say a hundred to be easy, then they're gonna get forty-five minutes a week, kind of, I mean, so...
They, but that's on them, on how, what they have for, for a budget, and you guys were deciding what was costing them.
And the others, the other thing that you can't put a monetary factor on, is I'm looking at, we have, what I hear is, it's the kind to try to calm down some of the, uh, uh, stuff that's going on with, with the folks driving up there. And I, I look at, we have a lot of young, young people in Fairhaven that know there's no coverage, so if I wanna go spin my tires and go racing, I'll go to Benson to go race around, right?
But that's not our problem.
Sure is my problem. If my son or daughter, and, and from Fairhaven is up there, and it's because of lack of-
That's your problem. You shouldn't have your son or daughter up-
I don't want us to get into a what-if thing.
I'm just, they were just, she was asking the question of, what are the, what are the things you're looking at? Besides being the, we've, we've got one of our neighbors saying, "Hey, we, we need some help."
Well, if you're gonna, if you want a police department as a for-hire, then you put it up to the taxpayers and let them ask, let, ask the taxpayers if we wanna have a police department out for hire.
That's a, that's a totally different-
No, it isn't.
It's a different discussion, in, in my mind, that's a different discussion, and we can put it on, but that's a discussion of what you wanna put later on, but that's not the discussion you see.
To respond to what you said, Carol, I think it is, it's, you know, feeling kind of thing. It's, policy is, I think the policy is, the question on that is, do we wanna be for hire, or do we not? And, um, then, then, and that's, that's pretty much good feeling. I mean, that doesn't need, that doesn't need money back and forth. Um, and I, I personally don't wanna, but I don't want us to get into, um, repeating ourselves a hundred times. Um, so Jeff, do you have anything more to add, because you've been-
Uh, just that if, if you're looking at it solely from the perspective of helping out your neighbor, you're really not outing anything to help them out.
They're hiring you, you're not helping. They're hiring you. You're putting a department out for hire.
That's, I mean, it's a philosophical discussion, it really is.
My question is, 'cause I think it's pretty critical, Carol, when you were saying, "Hey, look, I don't, I'm, you're still trying to decide, you haven't seen any numbers," is it, would it be helpful to see solid numbers? I bet we could, couldn't, couldn't do it here at this meeting, but to, but to table that motion, put, put some solid numbers together?
I still have all the bills and everything from when we were down in town before.
I, I just don't know if that would help in your decision-making process, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that's-
The reason the forty-five, the fifty came in, because that was right around where the sheriffs and the state police and everybody was, the state police were actually at the sixty-seven, fifty, and they just did it, that's an average of their highest and lowest salaries, for itself to be sixty-seven, fifty an hour, and that's what they bill.
Has, um, the town of Benson looked at the sheriff department in Rutland?
We had the sheriff department. Three hours on Wednesday, every week, same place.
A lot of people.
So, it wasn't effective, because if you only have part-time, you need, need to be random, and it needs to be in random places, because you very quickly learn where they are. Well, a point was brought up about kids from Fairhaven going to Benson. When you have your law enforcement officers circulating into the communities around you, they see actors that they know from this community that are problems, and what are they doing here? And with the drug problems that we've got, that is the only way you ever get a handle on it, is you drive them out of Fairhaven, where do they go? They go into the outlying communities. They're not known, but your officers know them, they see them here, they see them regularly in certain places, then you have a way of getting a handle on these problems. And that is a benefit to Fairhaven, which you cannot measure. There is no dollar value you can put on that. There's no way you can put a dollar value on that. And a good example of that was, he started with the town of Benson, fresh out of high school, because he wanted to get in law enforcement. He couldn't complete his training here, because there was no field training officer. He wound up in Bristol, eventually. He was in Burlington to do a deposition on a case. He saw a woman pull into a motel that was known in Bristol. So he turns around, and he watches. She was in and out in two and a half minutes. He went to the police department in Burlington, and it was the biggest money and drug bust in the state of Vermont for that year, just because he saw somebody that did not belong there. And that is a benefit that you can't measure. No town can measure that, you know, and that, that benefits you. I mean, if your, if your police officers, for some reason, are driving in Hampton, and they see somebody that's known in the drugs, in a certain place, and then all of a sudden it starts showing up, that they're there all the time, "What's going on here?" Then it's cooperation between police departments, which brings the results you wanna see. But I've, I've seen it where, you know, real heavy police presence drives them out of a town. Drug problem doesn't go away, because actors in it just move into the outlying communities. And that, you know, and the officers in those communities don't know these people from your community, so they don't know, you know, "This person is a known dealer. What's he doing up here?" That, that is one of the biggest benefits of, you know, circulating your officers out of the community into the outlying communities.
My suggestion would be that you go to your taxpayers and get more money for your own police department, and then we'll hire your police department to come to work in Fairhaven. This is ridiculous.
Any other different perspective? There is a motion on the, on the table right now.
Can you read it again?
It's, it was, this was-
It's a motion to deny a contract for police coverage with Benson.
Which, let me think about that for a second. If, uh, if we vote to deny-
You have to vote, you, to vote it down?
If you vote yes, you will deny the contract.
Right.
It's a motion to not do it.
Right.
So if you vote yes, you're not doing it.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? I'm, in that case, I'm gonna discuss for the question. Um, all those, excuse me?
You can table that motion and make another one if you want, and not table it, but withdraw.
We have to vote it out. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Mayor?
It's thirty-two again. It's 32 again.
Mr. Carroll, thank you for coming down.
Thanks. Thank you for your time.
I'll tell you the same thing I said before, the makeup of the board will all be the same.
Now, this, this is a hard thing to do. And I appreciate taking the time.
It's just from perspective roughly, our police department costs us 13 cents on the pantry. But thank you for coming, I appreciate.
You have a good evening.
You too. We'll have a long one. Five minutes for public comment. We haven't gotten very far, have we?
You're running on time though.
Yeah, well, that's amazing. Yeah, sometimes. I'm not hearing any public comments, so we're going to go to department head reports. Chief?
I'm very fortunate to spend a very steady two weeks. I don't really have much to add. Halloween night, I know Joe, I know the last man who ever been here, we did have a pursuit, 78 and a 35 right on Capitol Hill, right by Stewart's. The guy came through the intersection, the officer happened to be sitting there. We stopped and he went down into Castle and Castle was waiting at the corner. He turned, went north and we got him right by Recall's house. He had a seven-year-old child in the car. Kid said, Dad, what are you doing? And he went, oh, pulled over. So he's got seven charges pending. I haven't done a press release on it, another case, but that was the only thing we really had in the last two weeks. I was surprised on that type of night. And the officer was really good. He asked, you know, asked for permission to stay with him, you know. I asked what traffic was, traffic was light, there was no foot traffic. As they approached Castle, and I said, they're headed to the village, you're done. And they turned to the 30, and Castle actually took over for us there. So I was pretty impressed with the officer's restraint and, you know, his, his asking, you know, if he should continue. And again, unfortunately, I ended with no, no injuries, a bunch of charges. DCF was called out because of the child in the car. But I think that's really the only thing of interest that I can think of since Halloween at the moment. Oh, we did do, we were asked to do an escort for the senior boys or senior sports athletics. Similar to the, because of COVID, they really have their senior days. So Castleton and us and the fire departments, you know, did what we've been doing from X to Y.
That's fun.
That was thrown together kind of rapidly, but it worked out well and I'm glad everybody was happy. No updates on school, obviously I keep expecting to go to remote again. We've stayed the course so far. I think that's it. If I have something else, wait for these minutes if I remember something.
We're going to be talking to you a couple of times with, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How'd you make out with the headlights on that cruiser?
It actually, I went down and looked at it and I got another call after you told me later. And it's the wig wag switch, so if you run the lights, the wig wags come on. And it one sticks. Because when I went down that night after talking to you and I turned it on and the headlights were working, high beam, low beam, I turned the lights on, the headlights stuck, I shut the lights off, one headlight showed off. I turned the car, started the car on, the headlights were working again, so.
Does that, do the headlights have to come on when you turn your lights on? Is that automatic something?
It's just a, it's one of the slide switches. So when you, when you first, when you go to position three, everything comes on and that's the inner wig wags come on. And that seems to be causing the problem with the one, the one headlight.
Okay, because I just, like I said, when I, after I saw you that afternoon, I just, I kind of thought, you know, if you stop somebody and that light isn't working, you know, it's, I just, you know, I didn't want to be a pain in the neck, but I just.
I had those in the middle of the night where a headlight goes out. Well, I won't be stopping that car, I'm going to go the other direction, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, so like I said, I just thought I'd bring it to your attention.
I think we might have to have auto around that two-way come in or if maybe I can have the town mechanic look at it. I think the switch for the wig wag headlights, which is bad.
Okay.
And sometimes it works, sometimes, as I notice a lot of crosswalk, it'll have that one high beam stuck on. And when you shut them off, that's what causes that other headlights not functioning.
Okay, as long as we know what's, what's going on.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chris?
The only other department head is you.
Oh, I'm going to piggyback on the chief and he may have more to add about Adams Street. The chief did send a letter down to the property owner at 1012 Adams. Let him know in the letter, please comply, we'll be willing to waive your fines. If you don't, it's going to start becoming a daily fine of 500. Yeah, so hopefully this gets their attention.
And, and they, they, they called me and they were concerned with the tractors aren't the problem. I said, so I made it very clear in the letter, not the tractors that I'm concerned with. It's the car parts and the junk and the garbage and everything. But I've not seen a resolution on that and I don't know if we will. I'm sure just writing violations.
There's a lot of other furniture. Just to add to it, he came to my house and this is about a month ago now. And said he's doing a lot of improvement and a lot of stuff. And I said, well, I haven't been down by there in a while. So I made a point of going down. And people's, people's definition of a lot is different because I didn't see a lot.
Two of the neighbors grabbed me the other day complaining and I said, this is the steps that I've taken. And I know that Joe was also taking steps on his office that's right around me, the problem. Again, I don't know what the long-term solution will be there.
I mean, if they just keep ignoring your, I mean, what's going to happen? I mean, you just get a large, they can't take them to court, right?
Not anymore.
He adds to it, Joe.
It used to be you could contempt, do contempt of the court, but they've switched to everything now goes to collections. So as far as my end, it goes to collections. And if you don't care, they're going to call you, you know, the state sells it for pennies on the dollar. And Joe has some other avenues that, you know, I don't know if he wants to discuss with the public right at the moment, but he's working on, you know, through the town attorney and stuff, how we would attack.
At least you're, at least the two of you are working on it together. So, you know, we should be able to get some kind of result, I would think we should. With both of you doing your share on each end.
Yeah, just make sure you're coordinated.
You know, and I think.
Obviously you are so far, so you shouldn't even have to say that again, but. Yeah, let's, let's keep it, the property owners, the people that live around there, they don't deserve that. I mean, there's other places that are like that, but this one is protected.
Probably the worst, that's one of the worst.
Yeah, and then we're, we're working on, you know, we'll work on all of them as we go, but it's to stay focused. This is the, we're doing this one, we did the cars last year, we're working on this one this year. I know there's another one on Grape Street that, that could use a little bit of help down there.
The way, the way I look at it too, if, if you can, especially this one, because people know about this one a lot. And if we can get something where they're made to take care of it, it's going to make your job a lot easier for another one. Because they know you've got some teeth that you, you know, that you can get into them, so.
And we're not, and I say it every time we talk about this, and I'm sorry to be a broken record, but we're not, we're not trying to be jerks about this. But like Bob said, the neighbors, the neighbors shouldn't have to live next to a junkyard or a garbage dump. So that's not fair.
No, that's not fair.
I'm very clear with people when I write them a violation, the town does not want your money. We really just want compliance, is all we're trying to do. That's really the only tools that we have at the moment.
Yep. I would think it'd be easier to clean it than it would be to, you know.
You know, I mean, I should, I should take the equipment, park it in the back, just make it, put it in a straight. I know, make a straight line and then everything that's garbage, you'll see better. But he was, he was, he had a lot of solutions, but no real answers. So, yeah, keep on.
We actually started just to get the property owner, not because he's a tenant, he does not own the property anymore. So we've been going right at the, at the property owner. Ultimately, the responsibility falls back to them.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
He's had a firm.
DPW, the, the guys were out, I don't know if you saw the patches around town, but there were a few spots that could use a little bit of help. I think it was six spots in all, some down on Cedar, Washington Street, right here on Main. Overall, it turned out pretty good. I know on Washington, there's a little bump, bump when you hit it, but it'll, it'll smooth out. We did, we did get the fountain out of the park, there was a little bit of ice in it. I know there was, there was some pushing to get it done last week. And I, the guys, DPW had this on their schedule to do it this week and they did do it early this week. I just, I can't, I can't keep scooping the guys off projects and moving them here and then scooping them off and moving them there. If, if I operate like that, then nothing will get done and I.
The only thing I got to say about that, they had time to pick up the junk in front of the town office Friday. They could have shut that fountain down. It's too late in the year for that fountain to be up to begin with. That should be taken out in October.
That's what I said, put it on the schedule for October and then we won't have this problem again.
Yeah, well, the junk in front of the building has been gone for weeks. That wasn't on Friday.
They should have filled a hole so people won't twist their ankle.
That fountain falls busted.
We lost one like that already.
Yep.
Joe, not, not to belabor that point, but I don't think anybody's asked me to pull people off of projects. It's just to make sure that we're planning efficiently.
Yes. Yes, and, and next year it will be earlier.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the answer.
Good answer. The water pipe, so the ongoing saga of our inlet water pipe. Mr. Ferguson did get a guy down in there and he got a look at the outer wall of our, of our intake at the water system, at the water plant. There is a crack in it. We're not sure how long it's been there, but there has been a trickle of water coming out for a while. Aaron's reached out to Wayne Elliott and the state to see who we can get to either repair or punch a new hole through that mountain or hill and put in a new pipe. Where nothing's, nothing's off the table, I guess. We're getting, we're getting suggestions from people who know what to do with this kind of situation. Sewer plant, they're still working on the, trying to develop the 90% plans. That's, that's still going. We did apply, or we are applying for our own town permit. So that'll be going through our ZBA. So for, on my side, so the playground grant is open and I'm working on that.
The playground what?
The playground grant.
Oh.
I think I mentioned before, the, the EDC is working on the downtown designation for Fair Haven. That opens up additional funding and resources from the state. There's a water sewer grant open right now. And this is COVID money that's coming from the Fed to the state and from the state to our water, our end users of our water system. If you know somebody who is 60 days in a rear, they need to apply online. We can't do it for them. We got the word out on Facebook, but this, and I've tried to make calls to some of the people I know, but it's, it's kind of difficult to get, get ahold of certain individuals, so if you know anyone.
If there's 60 days in arrears to the town, they're probably not going to answer the phone from a town.
That's what I've been.
Having been there all.
Yes.
I mean, the people that are. Keep at them, I mean, it's, it's a help.
It's.
I don't know, you might get a couple of people that will.
It's a, it's a great benefit and it's, those are the people who need it the most.
Try a press release in the paper.
Oh, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. We got time.
How long is, how long is this for? I mean, how long do they have to apply for?
December, I think it's December 15th that you have to have your information into the system.
By then.
Yeah. We did close on 30 South Main, the property down on South Side. Our costs were a little bit lower than anticipated. Legal came in, we were budgeting 2,000, it came in at like 600. So we actually came away with about 9,100 in profits on that one, which, happy about that one. That doesn't happen every day.
That's free and clear. We don't own the previous hole, we, he turned that over to us.
Yep, he deeded that over to us. He deeded it to us in lieu of taxes. So we, when he gave it to us, we sold it and paid off his taxes and then the rest was ours. It was not a tax sale.
Okay, so that there's no, I mean.
No payment to him.
No, there's no payment to him.
No, I, I mean, he did us a favor.
He wanted to be done with that property is what it boiled down to.
Yeah, but I mean, it solved a lot of problems with, yeah, okay.
Yep. Our weekly water meter readings, I don't know if I've mentioned this, but we've had some great success with that. I think every week for the last, I don't know, six weeks, I've had somebody call me and tell me, look, my water is just too high, something is wrong. And with these weekly water meter readings, I'm able to go back and say, yeah, we see you were flat until this week. Something happened in this week and this is what happened. And people tend to, they tend to start, the wheels start turning and they, they, they stop telling me the meter's wrong because I can point to a certain day or it could be even a time when the water did spike. So good success on that front. We are still sending out letters for the people that are having unusual water readings. It may not be a leak, they may just be watering their cows in their front yard or something, I don't know. Whatever's using a lot of water. So, and that's really, that's gone over very well from my perspective.
Do, where do we stand with the water meter installation that we put on hold? We had the real tough ones at the, at the end.
There's 80, in fact, I saw Tom today, he said there's about 80 left. And they, they did start going back through and start picking them off, but with this COVID regulations that came back Friday.
They put it on hold again, okay.
We had to cancel two appointments this week because of, because of that. So moving on. Fountain we talked about, harassment training, we finally got that scheduled for tomorrow. Yeah, don't worry. The guys will, to stay separated, we were going to bring people in here, you know, kind of project. But everybody's either going to work from their desk or they're going to call in from their cell phone. So everybody's going to be able to kind of stay apart during this pandemic. New server installation is tomorrow, finally, that's a two-day process. We will have some, some downtime, like the listers won't be able to access their, their data. There might be some bugs, but we'll work it out as we go. It's, it's to be expected, like if you click the link, maybe it's not going to work on Friday. But we'll get there, we'll fix it as we, as they come.
Is that a server?
The server.
It's a server.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I talked to the rescue squad, I've been in contact with the rescue squad for the last two days. It's looking like their ballot request is going to be about 123,000, which is a bit more than double from last year, so.
How can that be if they're charging so per capita? How can, I mean, what do they charge us per capita?
It's, they're bumping it up, their meeting is tonight, but I was told that they're bumping it up to $48 per person. With the 2,000.
Is that every place they go or just Fair Haven?
All towns, that's going to be their number. We'll have the, we'll have the budget, I think he said he'd get it to me tomorrow.
So that has to go on for public vote, correct?
Yeah.
Are they going to get a petition, put that on?
Petitions were waived this year.
I could understand if it was 50, 50, if it was for the 50,000 like last year, but when they're going to 100 and something thousand.
Well, petitions were waived because of COVID, you know.
So let me see if I understand. We went from a certain amount, doubled it to 50, now 100 and some odd. They understand that the voters say, I just can't afford this right here.
What happens if they vote it down?
They vote it down, they get something, they get nothing, do they understand that?
They're not going to be covered either.
I, I think, I think they understand, but at the same time, just my conversations with the few folks, to stay solvent, to use that word, I think, I think they feel they need that money.
They saw quite an increase in their donations, correct?
I don't know about their donations.
I just wonder about that.
It was still $40.
Did, did anyone check to see if, what it would cost us to have Rutland Regional cover? And is it cheaper than 125,000? I'd want to see the numbers.
As part of the conversation, I did have this conversation with a friend earlier and it was floated that maybe I should look into that. If that's something the board would want, I can call Rutland Regional and see.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, so Rutland Regional, Rutland Regional may be able to provide ambulance service to the town for cheaper. If the board wants, I can. to the town for cheaper. If the board wants, I can reach out and see if they can do that. See what their per capita would be.
It, it's, it's physically responsible to do that, but there's a certain loyalty to, but at some point, cost has to come in, has to come in.
We can't pay the taxes.
What would that be extra on the taxpayer?
It's.
Fifty, what's?
Every 20,000 is a penny.
63,000, right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
What'd you say, bud?
Every 20,000 is a penny essentially.
Yeah, there's, I, I calculated out, it'd be for 100,000, I think it was almost eight cents, nine cents, something like that.
Hold on, scan up a little bit, bud.
It used to be. That was, I mean, that's using last year's numbers too, so it'll, and that's.
Now that, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Well, well, that's an appropriation. So there, there isn't much we can say about it anyway, right? So what happens if you, if the board didn't wanna switch services? Isn't it still within their rate for that on the ballot?
Yeah. Absolutely.
I think that it's responsible, knowing the numbers, to get a what-if scenario answered before.
For the voters.
And they might, Rutland might not have the capacity, but in reality, they're over here all the time.
They, they come to Castleman.
Right.
They, they come to Castleman.
They're already covering Fairhaven.
Yeah.
Here and there.
I'd also like to see the, the budgets back up to 123,000.
Yeah, that, that's coming. They promised to send that over.
Right.
Does it have three new ambulances in it or is it just to get to the 24-hour coverage? Is it bare bones?
No.
They don't have a three ambulance, or a full one.
My understanding was, my understanding Jeff was that it was just bare bones operation. No building maintenance, no ambulance, no.
So it's salaries?
It's salaries and I'm assuming, you know, just the electricity, water, that kind of thing.
I mean, Bob, Bob will understand this, but it sounds like the opposite of Herb's budget. You know, you know what I mean by?
Uh, whose budget?
Herb.
Herb's. Like there's a mistake.
Yeah. No.
Only in, in the other direction.
Yeah. Um, I don't know. It, it's a little scary number. It, I'm sure it doesn't cover nearly enough to run that, you know, $100,000 isn't, isn't doing much anything. It's, it's, you know, three salaries down there, four maybe, because they don't pay much, but.
Or a five town.
Yeah, I know. And so all these towns are getting the same shock. That part I get, but it would be, it would be foolish of us not to look at other, although I'm not sure that we wanna be under Mr. Finger's thumb, but.
The, the only other question I have, if, that would be nice to have answered, is if one town goes down, does it blow their entire budget?
Good question.
Right.
I think.
I would think it would.
Because I, I gotta believe that it's not gonna be an easy sell if, if the increases are like what you're talking here for all those towns. And they should have a plan B together.
And I think that they could, they could easily set a record and be the first appropriation never to get voted in.
Not to get voted in.
You know, and it's, it's a big, it's a big, uh, number.
Everybody understands the situation. I mean, we're not saying, but you know, they, they could have kind of eased it.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. I, I mean.
You know, even if they went to 75,000 or something, you know, and, and, and let the people know that it's going to have to go up sort of, you know, eventually to meet the 100 and something thousand, but they nail you all at once with it. That's, that's pretty, they, they were close on, when it went to from 25 to 50.
Right, but not going.
I mean, that wasn't a big, that was an overwhelming vote, you know, so.
Right. Well, there's less and less people that feel, that feel ownership of the ambulance service as, as they used to. I mean, those people that started that are, are not, as many of them are not here anymore. But it's, it's still, it's Fairhaven Rescue Squad and everybody feels that bit of ownership to it.
I totally agree, but the clinical services are different between what Rutland can offer and what Fairhaven can offer.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have the training that the Rutland folks do. So it's the service that you're getting as well. And I'm not saying let it go, because I'd hate to see that happen, but the clinical services, it's not apples to apples.
Oh, I know. They have to meet, they have to meet Rutland for any hurt stuff and.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they have to meet them.
I, I think what we're all saying is we, I, I'd hate to see them come in with something so high that it doesn't go through and then we owe, is someone coming back to talk to us about that? So maybe, maybe we can look them in the eye and have, have a little talk about it. Are, are you being serious? And, and do you understand what this means?
Yeah, no, somebody will be in to talk about it, but this, yeah, this is, this is just a.
When Sean comes, have him have his numbers.
Yep. And that's, that's all I had for you.
Let you know. Yeah, that's, that's scary. Uh, old business is talking about the local option and bond payment.
Yep.
Session.
Um, so I'll start with the discussions I've had around town. Um, people have, have stopped me and, and, and have purposefully come in just to talk to me about it. Uh, they asked, was, was I going to put the local option tax back on the ballot? Uh, my response is always, it's the board's decision, which is great. Um, so, uh, there's, we don't need to decide, or you don't need to decide tonight, but, um, that has been floated. Um, but what we do need to at least start a discussion tonight is to decide where to put this, um, bond payment. In your packet, there's a, a sheet with, uh, some numbers highlighted in yellow. Uh, the left, the big box on the left is what your, is what your budget increase would be. So.
Go ahead.
If you put 50,000, which is 33%, if you put the 50,160 into this budget, all the way on the far right, that shows your dollar change to your, um, sewer rate and down the line. Um, the seemingly least painful option from, from where I was sitting was the, the middle of the road where you split it 76,000, 76,000. Uh, that raises the, this budget to 5.86%, which is high, but not undoable high, I don't think. Um, and it raises your rate on your sewer to 2220. Uh, I'm sorry, it raises the sewer rate by 2220.
To 38.
To 3850, yes.
All right. Good. Yeah, I, I, I went through sticker shock when I saw this one too.
Did you?
And, uh, my, my initial reaction was, we already have some of the highest water sewer that, and it's going to, with this, this right here, we're gonna price ourselves to where it's gonna be tough in the market. But that, that aside, my, my question was, I'd like to see what the numbers look like if we, if we could take 100,000 out of the general budget pieces here and there. So I only had to come up with 52,000 and then I did your 50, the 50/50, half of it to the general tax and half over here, so that the sewer would go, instead of from 1630 going to, uh, to 3850, it might be something in the mid twenties. And I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just, so I'm ballparking here, but it'll, if we could, we're, we're doing the budget now. It isn't always just saying, okay, it didn't go through, let's take 152,000 and we're gonna spend it. Because when I look, if, if you're saying the general, the general budget, if you, we come in and we say we wanna, we're gonna have, uh, and I'm taking this 5.86 after appropriations or before? You, you understand what I'm?
Yeah, I do. That's before appropriations. I can't, I can't control appropriations.
So that's another quarter of a million appropriations on that. So then you, you come back and say, I'll tell you that, see on board, I won't vote for a budget like that when it comes in March. It's just way too much of an increase. So we, we have to come, come back, but that's just my initial.
The way you've got to figure here, it's, everything is on the water and sewer budget, correct?
Uh, no, some of it's coming out of the operating budget.
No, no, I mean, there's nothing on property taxes.
Yes. The, the box on the left is your property tax. That's the money that will be added to property tax.
Box on the left.
It says.
We would get, create, create another line item and add 50 or 76 or 100 or 100, the whole shot to, to the general fund.
So, so to make it, to make it easier, I didn't, um, I didn't expect the, you know, a final decision, but, um, to, for a starting point, if the board would give me an idea of how much they want me to drop into this budget, so that way as we go through, you can, you start whittling down or, or adding or subtracting.
When, when do we have to start paying? We, did you ever get that answer?
Um, Wayne said as early as, uh, January 2022. Um, USDA has not got back with me. They, they've been pretty, there's radio silence over there right now.
They thought there were no, no payments until construction.
That's, I thought we were a whole budget season out too. Um, but I don't wanna be, I definitely don't wanna be surprised by something if we owe money at, in January. Um, and at the end of the day, if we do raise, raise this money and you don't need it, then you got kind of a down payment.
Um, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Which we've done in the past.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past. My question is, are, we're not, are they building, are they starting to build this year?
Next, and yeah, they're looking towards spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So theoretically, they could have a lot of it done by the end of the building season and that's why the January.
Yes.
Payment would, okay.
After significant completion, then payments begin.
So if you split it 76 and 76, the, the rate for the sewer will be 3850, correct?
Yes.
Which is down substantially from the original SNO 66.
56 or 62 or something.
66 was the first one and it, it's gone down.
This is just my suggestion. Why don't we look at splitting it right now to 76 and 76?
Yep.
And, and that way, again, as we're saying about this appropriations, I mean, it's easier to do it. I don't think, I don't think it all should be put on taxpayers. Okay? I think some of it should be. And I, I think the user should have to pay a little something because they are people who are no benefit from it. But I do think, uh, townwide, I think there should be some kind of a tax on property. And, and doing it half and half, I think that's fairly fair.
Really?
Well, well.
Depending on whether you're, whether you're.
What do you have or not?
The non-users don't get any benefit from it.
Yes, you do.
Direct should do it. Direct, no, direct benefit.
Well, no, but you do get.
Now, if my sewer system fails, is the town gonna help you pay for it?
No.
No. You're not looking to expand services.
That's why.
You're not looking to expand services at all.
No.
That, that's why I come back and say, I don't like the 76, 76. If I'm gonna ask for the general tax, I'd rather ask for 26, and that's even a big ask. But 26 and 20, because, and that's cutting 100,000 out of our general budget.
How are you doing that?
Going through line item by line item and I'm, you know, and taking, and, and making some tough decisions that, that sooner or later, everything I'm seeing and hearing, we're gonna have to make some decisions that are gonna hurt.
You can't cut our services.
Yeah, that, that's what, without that much money.
You're talking about, you're talking about personnel.
I'm talking, I'm talking people. The only, the place where you make, where the only place you really save money is you're talking heads. You're, you're talking insurance, you're talking the workers' comp, you're talking, that's where, and we, we, we do it now. Someone's gonna be doing it in another year or two because at the, at the rate that we're going, we can't afford the taxes to continue going the way that they're going.
Well, let's dive, let's dive into it. Um, but we gotta have a, a working premise.
Should, should I start with, that's what I'm, yeah, that's, I don't, I, I need to know where to start, because I don't wanna start with 152 and then have the board be like, what are you doing? Um, so how, I need to know how much you want me to add to the, to the budget to, to begin.
My vote is 76, 76.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't hate that. And it's, whatever we do, it's.
Doesn't mean that's the final.
It doesn't mean, if, if you're gonna use it as a placeholder, I'm okay, but I, I'm, I'm still looking back, you're saying, overall, if you're talking, what's the increase this year from our budget for March? Anything over 3%, I'm gonna have trouble with. And that's gonna be a tough one to do without some cuts.
3%, 3% is level funding.
That's correct.
Right.
This is COVID. This is, this is money that, this is a year where we can't be going out and asking for all kinds of additional money.
Well, if you put it all on sewer people, you better get more grants because, and send a letter to everybody to help you get this money.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying put it all on sewer people. I'm saying on this one right here, the 3850, I don't, I don't wanna see 3850. I wanna see, see something going from 16 to something in the mid twenties. It's still gonna be on sewer people, but it's gonna be on taxes, sewer people and actual cuts that we have to make. We, you keep adding and adding, I don't know how you get control of the budget and you keep adding money to it.
Um, I don't think our, I don't think our budget's out of control. You know, I, I think, I think what you're, what you're asking to do is to cut what we can do in the town.
I'm, 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 all I'm trying, right, all I'm trying to do is set, you're, you're trying to get an idea and putting the budget together.
That, that's where.
And I'm saying, this is not an easy budget season. And we, we may even have to put a couple of extra meetings on, on this budget, in my opinion, in order to get a budget that we can, that we can squeeze and get this just as low as we can.
Hmm? Not since I've been here. You've done one extra meeting.
That's it.
We're doing great.
Right. But, and I come back and say, I think our taxes are high already. So, so I, I.
I don't disagree.
And they don't.
Just, just be, I mean, and we just have to be aware.
Okay.
That, that we're talking, we're talking bodies. That's.
Yeah, we are talking people.
Yeah. Okay. Well, are, are we okay with the 76? Just a, this is a.
As a placeholder, I can, I can support it, but I can, I'm not buying.
That's only 2% above or 3% above, above where we're.
Where are you, where are you proposing to put that in the budget? Is it just a line item? Is it an appropriation?
I think it's, I think it's a line item. I mean, I don't, it's part.
Have to be.
I, I don't think it should be an appropriation. I really don't think.
I don't think it should be.
I think we should take the responsibility.
Okay. That's, that's my question.
After hearing Rod's comment, I'm not so sure we shouldn't talk about if we're gonna ask the taxpayers to come up with 76, if that's where we ended up, 76,000, you put it on the March ballot to say, do you support the, the 76,000, the general increase to support our water and sewer?
You can't, you can't do that because if it goes down, we're 76,000 short in our budget. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, you know what I'm saying?
No, we're, we're, that means it automatically goes to all to the water and sewer.
That means it'll stay on, yeah.
It stays on water and sewer.
Mm-hmm. It'll, it'll be all coming off water and sewer rates.
So I'll drop 70, I'll drop 76K into the budget for the next.
Yeah. So we're, we're now at a budget increase of 5.86.
Adding that to it, yes.
Well, that's with, with appropriations?
No.
No, that's not with appropriations.
Appropriations, we can't, can't control appropriation. So it's, it's to say, I don't need to interrupt you, Glenn, but, um, Joe, we need to get this down to 3%, but appropriations could come in next year for 90,000, 100,000, 10,000. And then you're cutting services to give money to like Brock.
Right.
You know what I mean? So it's like you're cutting here to give money away. You really lose services if we try to, try to hit that target.
And we have to concentrate on what we're, what we're offering.
All the more reason, the explanation of what's you're voting for when you vote for those appropriations.
Yeah.
A quarter of a million dollars appropriations.
Yeah.
This, it's not, it's not paying.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
Pretty much a slam dunk. It may happen. That's, that's a big deal. Any other discussion on that? We're gonna land.
We still haven't decided not to put that on the ballot again, correct?
No, we'll, uh, we'll.
We can still hash that out. We can still hash it because we have plenty of time if we decide we wanna do it again.
Yes.
We haven't till, until, first of January?
Mid-January.
Mid-January. Okay.
Right. Yeah, we, yeah, we could, we could do it as a vote, but that, yeah. Um, here we go. Uh. Here we go. Uh, Communication District.
Okay.
Communication Union District.
Yep. So, um, Rutland Regional had sent us some information about, uh, a commun, joining a Communication District. These, I didn't realize, are pretty, pretty prominent throughout the state. Um, it's a way for, uh, these Communication Districts are a way to improve our communication infrastructure without really, uh, adding tax dollars to, taking tax dollars from the residents. Um, I like, the example I give is it's kind of like the, like your water and sewer. It's its own independent entity. It doesn't use tax dollars to, to provide a service. It'll provide a service and then kind of fund itself. It's like a small business.
How does it do that?
Uh, I'm glad you asked because Amanda O'Connor is here and she's going to talk to us about it.
Uh-huh.
Amanda, can you hear me?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Awesome. Um, yeah, no, you summed it up pretty well. Um, Communication Union Districts were formed, um, uh, legally back in twenty fifteen. But, uh, the oldest one in the state, uh, EC Fiber has been operating since twenty eleven. And in its form, um, cannot use any taxpayer dollars, um, or any money from the municipality. All the work is undertaken by the Communication Union District itself, as well as any debt and liability. So none of that can be transferred over to the taxpayer, um, or the municipality. And it would be a taxpayer, whoever chooses, uh, to accept, um, or pursue services with, uh, through the infrastructure that the Communications Union District has funded, scoped out. Um, it's same as going with like Comcast. You choose your package. Um, but the goal of the Otter Creek Communications Union District, which is the C U D, uh, looking to build out fiber throughout the Rutland region and any neighboring towns that choose to join. For example, Goshen has joined the Otter Creek Communications Union District, uh, which now has eleven municipalities, um, on board. Um, but again, that goal is to bring fiber to the premises throughout. And fiber being the, um, the ideal, uh, technology to provide services because of, uh, the speed and reliability at the technology that provides far more so than, uh, uh, a modem or wireless or DSL. Uh, just as an example, fiber to, uh, upload approximately a hundred megabytes would take under, uh, or about nine minutes. DSL would take about nineteen point seven hours. Um, so you have a significant, uh, increase in the speed of, um, transmission. Um, and also, again, the reliability of that, of that service. Um, Vermont Legislature has a statewide goal of having universal coverage throughout the state. Um, uh, by twenty twenty-four for one hundred upload, one hundred download. Um, trying to see, uh, there are other key points, though. The other reasons that this is something we are very readily pursuing, uh, is also that it's known to increase home values. It's also what Vermont's whole really needs to, uh, have a strong footing in the, what we're now experiencing as the complete, you know, digital economy ecosystem. Um, and not just the economy in the sense of doing business, but, um, also going schooling and keeping up, um, and being competitive. Uh, not just national, but also global scale. Um, was there any questions that you had about CUDs, um, that I can?
I have a question. Does it, um, would it cover, if we're talking about Fairhaven, every home in Fairhaven or just certain geographical areas or sectors?
No, the, um, once, um, a select board has voted, uh, for the town building C U D, when work undertaken and scoped out, the entire municipality is integrated in that scoping, uh, work. Uh, the rate at which the buildup happens depends on funding, the weather, not the contractor, uh, for example. But, uh, it will be accessible to any premises that wants it. To include also the statewide Vermont Communication Union District Association, the C U D, uh, is working to form a nonprofit. So there is a way, uh, we can also provide subsidized service, um, to those that can't afford it. So it's not just also making this available to those that can afford a hundred, one hundred service. So again, one hundred upload and download, but those who need it and can't afford it, and there'd be, you know, a, a structured process for that. It wouldn't be willy-nilly.
What's the, um, estimated turnaround time?
We're hoping to start work next year. Um, and where that would start, I couldn't tell you yet. We're just finishing our feasibility study and should have our, will have our business plan, uh, no later than January, I believe. Um, we're building out a website now, so we'll also have, um, significantly more information that's readily available here in the next couple of weeks, as well as a platform where anyone can go in, learn more about the C U D, um, its specific, uh, work, what it means for them, but also what their need is. Um, it does help funding if we know that there's, um, people working from home or have telehealth needs or going to school as we pursue additional funding to bring this on. Um, again, funding and availability of contractors to get the work done will be the only thing slowing down our build-out.
So, let's talk build-out. Where are we starting? And pardon me for being skeptical, but Fairhaven seems to be the last one that gets, you know, any, this side of bird's eye, let's put it that way. Um, so, so it, it makes, it makes sense that you're going to do population areas first, Rutland, that area. Is that the way it's going to work? And so what's the timeframe for Fairhaven? And what would be, what would be the cost, um, per household?
Uh, so there's a lot in there. Um, one, assumptions, uh, Rutland City not included in this build-out at all. Um, where the work will start first will be reflected in the feasibility study, which will, completed here in the next couple of weeks and made public. Uh, the town of Brandon was the first one to actually vote to form the Communications Union District and join it as well. And, uh, right now, it looks honestly like priority will be given to the areas that are least served. Um, that might be Thudbury. We can't even get a hot, hotspot in Thudbury because their internet is dial-up, large satellite, and can't support a hotspot. Um, but we have students in telehealth need. So where work starts will be based on, more likely than not, the, the intensity of need. Um, and again, work is slated to start, again, and pending funding, uh, in the next year. And what it means per household, um, I honestly couldn't give you the projection right now, but none of that is really transferred. Um, this is not something you need the budget for, and it's not something that, uh, I mean, there's, to a degree, expense incorporated in what someone might pay. But what we'd be having, the prices that rate packages would be based at would be competitive with what you already see with Comcast as the closest example. Um, so it's, it's not a per-household concern. Uh, again, it's debt that will be taken on by the C U D, and none of that can be transferred over, uh, to any participating municipality. When a municipality votes to join the C U D, all you say is that we're allowed to incorporate your, uh, residents and including businesses, uh, into the scoping and planning. We cannot do any build-out, uh, if you do not vote to join the C U D.
And an individual, uh, household would have the right to not want that if the, if the, was built up for the whole town?
Oh, yeah. We can't go anywhere near private residents. Um, not even so much we, but the contractor. That's something that would have to be agreed upon at a later date.
Amanda.
Fiber's on telephone. So it's really, uh, we'd be going pole-to-pole on, um, on roads. So that's, um, uh, public, um, certificate of public good that will have to do, um, throughout the work. Um, but once it gets onto private property, there is a lot of strict permissions that have to be given for that to happen.
Amanda, Glenn Travers here. Is, I looked at this as being, it's very similar to like the solid waste district. So in order to, the questions like Bob had of, will you forget about it? We should have a representative that sits on a board that would be the communication link to the town. Is that, and that's the first part I question. The other one, have we heard from like Poyntle, West Haven, the other select boards around, around us here?
Um, yeah, I've spoken with the Poyntle Planning Commission most readily. Um, uh, West Haven's joined, Castleton has joined, Benson has joined, uh, Hoberton, Thudbury, Chittenden, Rutland Town, Pittsburgh, Brandon, Goshen.
And the reason I ask the question is I want to make sure, didn't want to be at a disadvantage of not having, even being in the race for fiber optics with it all happening all around us? And people. No, go ahead.
No, no, no. Please, your, your sentiment. I apologize.
No, it, it was, it was just that, uh, I was trying and weighing out, all we're doing, you're looking for from us as a select board is to say, yes, we're interested in being a part of this.
Correct. Um, that I can, I'll send over draft language to, to Joe, um, I think I might have. Uh, but you'd have to have a formal vote saying that you are, are interested and you would like Fairhaven considered and integrated into the planning. And again, it would be strategic. Um, hierarchy isn't based on, on population centers as probably more of need. And again, I can send you a feasibility study if you want to look through all that, um, as soon as that's available. Uh, but we would need a representative for the town. Um, ideally, that's just so that way, if you have any specific concerns, it's an easy route of communication. But you also will always have me. The R P C does hold a seat on the board, and, and I currently hold that position. So we can also just reach out to the R P C, um, to advocate on your behalf. But again, each, each town is pretty much on equal footing in this case, and Rutland City is, um, not part of the, the Communications Union District. Um, would make a lot of businesses build out fiber there, considering how congested it is with other communications options. Um, so we're building, aiming to build pretty much around it, um, at this point, please.
And is our decision somewhat time-sensitive or, I, I read something somewhere that there's this, there's this limited time or this sort of being the early sign-up?
Um, it's the easiest time if you were to choose to sign up, um, before COVID, it needed to be a vote on Town Meeting Day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but otherwise, um, we're working with CARES Act funding right now to fund hotspots throughout the region. We've currently funded twelve, thirteen, thirteen hotspots. Um, the, the C U D has bought tech as paid for the, as well as paying for the install. Um, wherever we could work with the municipality to make that happen. Uh, but because we haven't finished the feasibility study, we can't apply any of that for the actual build-up. So it's a step at a time. And I can walk you through if you'd like to know, um, what that, the evolution of efforts, um, are in order to get to build-outs, if things that have to happen between now and then. And I actually completely forgot what you initially asked. I don't even know if I answered your question.
No, you're, we're there. Plenty of information.
I guess the, uh, I'm going to sound, I'm going to sound like I'm negative, but I'm actually for this. I, I still don't understand what your funding source is now.
Uh, funding source currently for our work, uh, we're using CARES Act funds for emergency services that we can provide.
Oh, okay.
We also have.
You did say that.
Vermont Community Foundation. And in the next year, we'll likely be, um, applying for a loan to fund initially, um, uh, work. But there's also bonds that will likely be, um, applied for and taken. Uh, so there's various types of funds. There's also a lot of funding that's coming out because as a nation, we're really behind, um, in comparison to our other first and second world countries, um, in the digital age. So, uh, there's likely to be a lot of grants available, and this is all going to be drawn out in a feasibility study. The consultant we're paying to do this work, as well as a third-party reviewer, is, um, lining up, um, what the logistical next steps are, including, um, funding sources.
I personally, I feel we'd be short-sighted not to be included. Our, I think this is something that the community would really be excited about, whether you have, from the big health problems down to the kids struggling at home, trying to do their school stuff. I wish it was quicker than a year. But I'd like to see us at least get the information to move forward with it.
Can we get the information for our next meeting? Or does it have to be voted on tonight?
Uh, if you, I don't know.
It would not have to be voted on tonight.
What information are you looking?
Well, no, because she said she's going to get information together and send it to us.
Oh, send the, uh.
Feasibility study.
It does, we don't, we don't need that to make a decision, correct?
Right. We don't need that.
No, does anybody really see a downside to this?
No, not really.
No, not at all. That's why I think, I think we can call.
If you, if, if the board makes a motion, I can print the document and you guys can just sign it as I see you.
I'll make a motion that we accept it and go with the.
Otter Creek C U D?
Otter Creek C U D.
What's I can do?
Any other discussion?
Um, when it comes around to getting someone from our town to sit on the, if they want to call it the board or whatever, I think we should have somebody with good I T experience.
I'd not.
Well, that'd be me.
You gotta tell Chris Colley has to do it.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. You might know somebody.
No, but it needs to be someone that knows the right questions to ask and understands what's.
Agreed, agreed. Good.
Got a motion on the floor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. We'd like to join.
Wonderful. It's very exciting. Um, thank you. And I will make sure to send you the feasibility study if you'd really like more material to read.
Oh, absolutely.
I knew it, I knew it. All right. Well, I'll send it over to you as soon as it's available. And if you have any follow-up questions and have another call, I can answer any inquiries by email or phone.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Good night. All right.
That also would make new people moving into the area happy and want to live here.
Would want to buy houses and be here because of the fiber.
Any type cheaper than what Comcast is, everybody's going to jump up.
That's right.
Comcast is very.
All right.
I don't believe that it'll be faster or cheaper, I mean, but I think it'll be faster and more reliable.
More reliable, less maintenance.
Yeah. Fiber optics, so. So essentially hardware, right? Fiber optic, hardware, yeah. Um, so we're into budget review.
Right.
Yes, we are.
I really like budget season.
Do I?
I really do. This is my favorite thing.
You're a nerd.
Down to the police officers. Bill's sitting here. Let's, then he won't have to sit here for the whole thing. That's on it.
After hearing the local office access, you can just skip right over me.
I, yeah, I mean, what we're.
He's here. Let's get, let's go through this stuff first.
Page, yeah, page, so P D starts on page four.
Page four, yep.
So the, right, right out of the gate, just to, to clarify the salaries, it says three point eight four percent increase. That, that counts the two point two five percent union increase, and there's a, um, shift premium of a dollar. And that's, that's what you're seeing. That's what makes that higher than the two and a quarter.
Okay.
The shift premium comes to about thirty-five hundred dollars.
How many hours, how many hours does that represent without me in it?
Your night shift.
Yeah.
So it's, okay, so it's every, every, yeah.
Anybody that's working nights gets that. Well, I don't, but, um.
What's the, what's the time for, is it eight o'clock at night it starts?
No, you, at the last contract, it used to be started at, um, seven, seven P M. And then you guys negotiate. Anybody that was scheduled to night, so if I have a guy scheduled, let's say he works noon to eight, he doesn't get the night shift differential. Doesn't start.
The person that's on the night shift.
Anybody scheduled for the night shift and they start between four and six P M, they get scheduled for it.
That's when it starts, okay.
Well, this would be a place to propose a cut of the head to start right off.
Well, be, be.
I, I hate to say that. I, I hate to say that. And I don't hate to say that because I think we could live with three, but personally, but it's not gonna be popular.
Nope.
So can we just say what there are? There's four full-time. Just how much, and, and what's the FTE come to for the part-time?
I don't know what our total, I can't give you the total FTE. Wait a minute, let me look before I give you that.
Well, when, and I, all right, I'll let you get down to it first, I have another part-time question on that.
I don't have the total FTE on that, but I can get it to you.
We probably, can we do the math backwards on per hour?
I didn't understand the question.
How many part-timers do you have?
Uh, there's seven right now, seven or eight part-timers, but they're only 30 on the midfield.
Uh, it doesn't, doesn't matter, does it? Can't you take the 18,000 and, and divide that by like 25 bucks an hour or whatever?
Um, are you looking for, again, I don't understand what you're looking for with the part-time.
I wanna know, if we're talking about heads...
You wanna know how many 40-hour weeks?
Seven part-time people, are they, we got some per diem within the seven, how many part-time officers are there that have scheduled hours?
Zero.
They're all per diem? They don't have anything guaranteed to them?
No.
Okay.
No, it's, they cover vacations, they cover foot patrols, anything extra, any details, sick time. Right now, the way the schedule is, there's like, in a six-week period, you'll have two open shifts. And then the next, excuse me, eight, there's in the first set, and then the next schedule, there's three open shifts.
In that case, financially, it doesn't matter if you have seven or 27.
Right.
I only have a thousand dollars.
Yeah, cuz they're, okay.
Because they're just filling in gaps, they're not scheduled hourly.
That's just different from the way I'm used to.
Right, and that leads into my question because before I'm ready to start slashing full heads, I look at the part-time salary and I'm saying, uh, take that 18,000, cut it back to 13,000, I've got 5,000 of my 100,000 I'm looking for. Move on to the next line. It doesn't always mean, I'm just saying, I don't care how many part-time you have, uh, I don't wanna budget 18,000 for part-time. I look back and what, and say, what can, without totally, you can tell me that, uh, in 1819, we, our actual was 13,858. In 1920, our actual was 13,48. So I'm going, okay, I know where, it's, I, I know it, it'll be tight, but those are the kind of decisions, before I go to full-time heads, I look to say, okay, I got 5,000, I just put 5,000 in the bank, now I need 95,000.
That's, that's, you never spent 15,000 actual on any of the years up till now. So to me, it seems cutting it to 15,000 might be a reasonable thing to do.
Right, that, that's the highest.
Right, I mean, the highest you've spent is 13,858 back in 18 and 19.
No, 1920 you didn't, 15.
I, I know we've spent, we, we spent 15, but I'm just saying, don't spend 15.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whatever, whatever number we put there, you're gonna spend, well, I think we've been, we've been putting numbers and not quite getting there, but I'm saying, wait a minute, I'm gonna make the assumption, I'll put a number there, you're gonna spend what I put there, because most people spend what they're given. I only wanna give 13 on the part-time.
It's a start.
It's a place to start, because, and if you don't, if we don't start somewhere, I don't know how we get...
I would ask if you're gonna do it, cut it back to the 15, just because we're looking at trying to give the, I mean, if your bottom line, you go to McDonald's and make 13, and I have some officers making 16. I mean, for what we're doing, we have to respond to...
It's not the hour, you're not talking about hourly rate, you're talking about the amount, the total dollars spent.
Yes, but in that, why we increased it, we stayed at 15, because we were looking at trying to pay the part-timers more money. We have some guys that are, that are full-time certified, some that are level 2E, some are level 2, but, but just with the, I mean, if we go to minimum wage of $15 across the board, the way the state's been talking, we're gonna have cops making a dollar more than minimum wage. It's just not, I mean, they put a lot of time, a lot of training, a lot of effort, and they do put their life on the line for the community. So that's why we were looking at trying to, to boost that pay a little bit. And we've historically underpaid part-timers versus other, um, but if you look at my line item, it's basically been 15,000 for my 20, or my 16 years. We did have it a little higher at one time, then we got the fourth officer, I brought that back down to 15.
I, I can live with 15 for now, for this pass, for this pass, we might come back again, but I can live with 15 now.
Yep.
You want me to move it to 15?
15.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
What's the communications, the big jump in that?
That is a potential placeholder on if we have to start paying for dispatch. The last time I talked to them, they're like, oh, we ran your numbers, you're at 70,000. But my argument is, well, why is Brandon at 40, when they have eight full-time guys and we have four? So this is a work in progress. The bill did pass with that in there, but the dispatch fee's been pulled out of it. And legislator did not, legislation did not want the state police to be able to set, to basically control. So I talked to Jim Harrison, he's a rep for Rutland County, he's a Chittenden congressman, or House rep. He said it's probably going to happen, just a matter of what, level what's gonna happen. Uh, Bob Helm told me that, um, what he's seen during the dispatch was the majority of the towns are represented by small towns like us, and they heard my voice when I testified in front of the House Ops. So the 10,000 was a placeholder, and what they were looking at was an increasing every year. So if you say 70,000 over a course of 22, 23, 24, 25, you would be at 70,000. So I just did a placeholder of 10. You guys can totally whack it and kick the can down the road.
Is it aggressive number, do you think?
What do you mean?
Is increasing it by 9,000 too aggressive?
I don't think, well, I'll just say their last number was 70,000. So if you take 70, divide that out, if you wanna increment it up, I was, I was going based more on 45,000 where Brandon is, so it's been my argument, if you're gonna go, we should be the same as them or less, because you can't say that we're that much busier than that town, population-based and the size of the department. So I was looking at, over the course of four years, 10,000 a year increment up, after four years, we'd be at 40,000, that's why I did 10. So, um, you guys can make a decision, if you wanna cut it out of there, that's fine, we just, at some point, it may come back to, and, to us. So this month number, we might take this 10,000 this year and not use it at all.
That's what I'm asking. So are you just putting that in, in the anticipation that down the road, it's gonna be a big number? I just don't think we should put anything in this year that, that we don't think we're gonna use.
We're not reasonably sure we need to spend to give the coverage.
As if we go as of today, we do not pay for dispatch, in theory, we don't pay that, that amount. Do I think it's going to happen at some point? Yes, and I've probably been the loudest person in the state against a crazy jump like that, because it's not, it's a, every small town can't afford that kind of range. It started at 112,000 and my argument's gotten down to 70. So I'm hoping, um, when they start looking back at this again, it'll come to something a little more reasonable. So though they're projected every year up to 2025, it would be 25%, next year it'd be 50%, 75, and then at 2025, we'd be at 100%.
But, so, we really don't need any dollars, actual dollars for this coming year, cuz it's not...
Well, the problem is, we're talking about the following year's budget.
July, July 21 to July 22.
So effective today and this summer, no. When our budget runs from July to the following summer, I'm okay taking it out of there, but that's your, again, I just wanted with the precursor of, we may not need it, and maybe it's better off to put a small amount in a reserve fund.
What if we cut it in half? What, the 9,000?
Right.
Did 4,500 extra instead of nine?
Well, what I was thinking, would it be better off if we put money in the reserve, in a reserve bank, and then it's there versus, and then if we don't spend it, that money would roll into the following year instead of actually putting it in the budget?
Right.
So we're building a bank to pay for something, and ultimately, we may have to pay at some point, but...
Could you do, could you do 4,500 in something like that?
Well...
Yeah, so drop, drop it to zero, drop it to 9,000 and put 4,500 in a reserve.
In a reserve.
In, in, technically, I mean, in theory, if we don't, if we don't use it, then we have that reserve sitting there, in worst case, should we drop back out and use it for...
I mean, that's, that's 4,500 we wanna cut out of, I mean, you know, we're gonna take out of there.
It's...
I just don't know, when are we desperate enough to not plan for the what-ifs?
Right, I, I mean, it just seems like, I've only been through two budget cycles, so I'm far from an expert, and I look to people, but I, I'm looking, saying, I don't think we're, we're, our pencils are sharp enough to get where we are today.
Well, I agree with you on this number, I'm just worried about three years from now that, that we didn't have this discussion and...
We may, we may come back next, next, next year and be sitting here and saying, okay, we need this, and we're going, yep, you're, you're right, that was, we should've put it in reserve, but, but I, but I'm gonna say, I wanna, I gotta get to next year.
I'm okay talking it totally, if that's what you guys wanna do, but that's a decision that you guys would have to make, that at some point, we'd have to pay the piper if that, if that bill came into fruition.
Well, I think we keep the pressure on the legislature.
Absolutely.
Because that, that, it's a, it's a good way to kill, kill, um, local policeman.
Absolutely.
And if, if they wanna start by, by all of a sudden charging us 100,000 or 70,000 or something like that, then, then they will have a much higher, you guys will all be looking for work in the police, in the state police.
What I told the state, I told the state is, are you prepared to pick up the call volume if it's down to just me working? I mean, I'm not gonna be available, so, and I don't think they're thinking that far out.
They should be.
So what do we, 9,000?
You wanna take the nine out?
That's what I want.
I would.
That's what I wanna do.
I think so, and then with, I really, I really, you know, we talked to the, the county delegation and explained to them how difficult this is for us, senators and legislators, just, just...
Well, I think, yeah, we did skip over...
My line item form, so I'm trying to keep pages.
We're, we did skip over...
Yeah, I, I have a question, I have a question on the SRO.
Okay, and the SRO.
Okay, we're taking that nine out, so...
Okay.
Let's go back up.
Was scheduled for 36,000 last year, and now it's 37,000, which you don't have a problem with. But he was paid 54,031 dollars last year.
Again, that, that number is a placeholder because we, for accounting purposes, you have to put something in the, the budget side, and the other side is revenue. Because what we pay him is not what we build a school, similar to what the Benson conversation we had earlier.
We make money.
Not much.
It's, well, like, is it still, I, I'll be consistent and say I like SRO.
That's what my question is.
I don't, I don't.
54,000 was paid out last year on SRO.
Well, that's not just the one person, though. That's all the basketball games, that's, any securities lumped into that. So his salary alone was only 33,000.
Right.
And then...
Did the school pay some of that, 54,000?
The school pays it all. That's everything back from the school, is the 54,000.
Right, if, when, when you guys look at, when you look at, when you look at revenue, there's gonna be an offsetting line item for the same amount.
Right, exactly.
That's all my, that's just my question.
Well, that 37,000 is really blanked out of the budget? I wish it wasn't in there at all, but for...
54 is blanked out of it too, because...
54 is actually, no, 54 is on the revenue side.
No, but I'm saying, but that's, that was a revenue, so really, the 54 was a wash, correct?
No, there's profit in that.
There's, no, 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 what I'm saying is that the revenue side will show for that 54,000.
Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
It's gonna show like 60, right, no, something like that?
Yeah, I haven't looked at it, but yes.
No, that's my que, that was my question, it's, it's not...
The, Bill, the, uh, police overtime, which increased again, and, and I, and I look to say, okay, is there any opportunity there? Because when I look, you go back to 17, 18, where it was about 10 grand, to 19 grand, I, you...
So if you go, if you go back to look at the full-time salaries...
Yep.
At one point, when I calculated full-time salaries, it included the shift differential and holidays. So if an officer worked on a holiday, that came out of the full-time line item. At some point, the town switched to where all holiday overtime was coming out of the overtime line item. So I went to Joe and I said, I don't understand why my overtime is here, I know I haven't spent 150% of my overtime, and we tracked it back through the town accountant, that that was where the holiday overtime was coming from. So we took money from the full-time, instead of upping that, we put the money from the full-time line into the overtime line to show where it was actually coming from the accounting line items.
And we made that change when?
This was two, two years ago.
So, so let me rephrase it and come back and say, so, when, if I were to look at the actual for 1920, the 14,185, then we budgeted 18, and then we turned, can we, and again, I'm just looking to try to get a few thousand here, a few thousand there, to get, it all adds up, it's real money. Uh, can that overtime budget of 19 be something like 50?
Isn't the answer not if everybody takes their vacation?
We're, no, but I, I thought we're using, we're using the new system now.
It's if they, the, yeah, comp time comes out of there also, but if, but if, the way the, so even how it works, if an officer doesn't work on a holiday, they have an option, eight hours comp or eight hours of pay.
Mm-hmm.
So that money comes out of there also. So you could take the money with the caveat that you might run over because there's not enough money to cover, um...
Well, we should be able to figure that out, though, right?
And then there's the unexpected overtime. So I guess if you look at historically back, what we've spent...
Historically?
It hasn't been that high.
We haven't done that, and if we went to 15,000...
Even 16.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, and I know it's gonna be one you have to watch closer and everything else, but I'm saying, if I can get a few thousand here, there, maybe at, at the end of the day, it adds up.
Here's the caveat, is, I will tell you, is, you give me money and we'll try to get by the best we can, I'm not gonna...
And we could always come back and you say, I went and reran those numbers, this is what it means, I'm open to that.
Were you talking 3,000 out of that?
Well, I was, I was looking to take 4,000 out of that one.
Well, if you do, well, last year was 14,000.
Yeah.
But 18, 19, it was 17.
Right.
So I mean, I think you gotta come in between it somewhere, right? Even if you did it, even if you did 15,000, that would be taking 4,000 out of it, you're right.
Mm-hmm.
Or you said, what'd you say, 16?
Do 16?
I think 16.
16, I, I can, I can do 16.
Let's do 16.
Let's do 16.
Bill, do you know what your comp time liability is?
That's 15,000.
It's not a ton right now, but like, so I have one officer that takes all the holidays as comp, I have one that takes it all as cash, I don't get any, and then, um, the sergeant, it varies back and forth week to week depending on what he picks, so I don't have an overall without... If you can, if you can identify what the comp time liability is...
Right.
Okay, and what, what the target is, cuz you know kind of what it's growing by, then you can say, let's just say it's $4,000 liability that's sitting out there that is possible, Then you can just say, well, there's seventy-five percent of that could go at any one time. You can't control that. Seventy-five percent, so in this case, three thousand dollars, get lumped on the, uh, you know, like eight thousand dollars, which is what you really need for overtime, and just say, okay, that's, that's my total.
Well, the holidays are in your also.
Oh, okay, but I, I just see, in the past, you had seventy-six hundred dollars and budgeted and eight thousand dollar budgeted. Those are what you really need. That's what you anticipated need for overtime, right?
Yes, that's the overtime.
Overtime.
But why we increased it in this budget is because we took money, the holiday overtime out of the full-time line and put it into the overtime. Because I kept looking at my overtime and I said, what's, what's the problem? I know I've spent, say, three thousand in overtime, but I've got three hundred percent over to Joe already. So we tracked it back to holidays. Okay, so that's still something you need to anticipate, but I thought it was comp time that was killing you. No, we did have one, one officer left. He had a bunch of comp time.
We're using the new system.
It's paid in overtime.
Yeah, comp time, it's the same, it's the same thing. It doesn't, it's, it's not different.
I think everybody should, I think everybody should.
Comp and overtime are the same thing.
One year worked.
I think everybody should be paid when they work and no comp time. I, this comp time, they need, they can build up.
It's in the, uh, the contract, though.
Yeah, that's, I know, but I just, I, comp time is a terrible thing.
I, I will disagree with you, but unfortunately.
They aren't going to get rid of it.
So with those changes, that percentage should come, increase for, for that forty-one-ten grouping should come down. What, I'm, I'm not the math major, but that should have dropped.
The total is fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, I bet, and I bet that six point two seven percent dropped to.
How much did you take out of the overtime?
The total department is fifteen thousand. We took nine, no, what did, three thousand out of overtime.
Three thousand out of overtime.
Three thousand out of, um.
Yeah, so down fifteen, so, uh, you're going to be down to a quarter, so isn't it a quarter or six?
Yeah.
So it's going to be like two percent or something?
No, it's going to be under, it's going to be under three, which, which I was saying, which.
Almost a hundred and twenty, I believe.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
So far, we haven't.
Without, without even talking, the head, what I, what I was saying, I'm saying there's ways you can go without getting into the head, I think.
I don't see why you couldn't cut four thousand out of the SRO if you just figured his annual salary is, that's the placeholder for him, and the rest of it would show up on the revenue side.
Should take another four out of the SRO?
If his base salary is thirty-three thousand, if you reduce that thirty-seven to thirty-three, that covers him. Everything else comes in on the revenue line item.
Does, that take care of, that, the thirty-three thousand, does that take care of insurance and everything? It does, okay.
I'll have to double check on the, because he gets a pro-rated retirement.
Insurance is separate, though, huh?
Insurance is separate. Okay, so this is just, this is salary.
Yes.
So, so we change it to thirty-three?
Or thirty-four. I'm just saying.
Let's do thirty-four, let's do thirty-four. So we can cover the, the benefits, but do that to thirty-four.
Well, now we're down to eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand. We're, we're, we're getting around.
You're still on the first page, Glenn.
You still got to show that expenditure, even though you're going to wash it, you got to show that expenditure of your, you know, the basketball game and things, not this year, but, you still got to show it, though.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, you're right, because they do get paid out of that line item.
Right, so don't get too greedy.
Well, I, I just, I'm leery of under-budgeting our revenue somehow here. What are, is this working to do that?
This side doesn't affect the revenue.
Doesn't affect.
But you will, in theory, overspend in that line, in that line.
You'll overspend, if you, if you.
But it will show on the other side as a wash.
You'll get, you'll get it, but you're going to overspend this if you just budget, if you just budget SRO.
Well, we've overs, we've overspent it last year.
Right.
We overspent the year before that.
We historically overspent it because, because like this year, the school asked for two people for, for sporting events. So it's, we're only normally scheduled to have one. So it's going to show this year when you look at this budget, yeah, we overspent by this, but when you look at the revenue line item, it'll, it'll wash.
Yeah, we brought it.
All right, okay, so we, you're comfortable taking, make, dropping that to.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Good.
That's three thousand.
So you reduced that by how much, you know?
I think, what, what percentage would that make it?
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
So isn't it like a half a percent increase now?
Yeah, which is, you can't, you're.
My, I don't have like.
This is why I don't put it on the screen, is because we get fixated on that one number, like, what is it now? What is it now? What is it now?
Let's keep moving. We got a lot to do.
That's why I don't do that, Glenn.
Well, I like it.
I, I.
I know, I mean, it's only because otherwise we're spending money like.
My quick figure here shows that it's, uh, the variance is only like thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars now. Is that correct?
No, it's under two grand.
Because it was, it was twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty, no, right? The total thing.
Twenty-eight thousand, one seventy-one.
Twenty-one seventy.
I'm looking at the wrong numbers. That's vehicles. I'm looking at the wrong numbers. Never mind.
But you're under two grand.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else in police department salary?
No.
She ain't recording nothing. Okay. And then let's do police training.
That's another one where, I mean, gosh, you got to do what you got to do, but we haven't gone anywhere near seven hundred dollars in the actual expense for the past few years.
You have new people or something?
Dues and meetings, we're going to go from what we've been spending up to eleven fifty. It looks like we've been actually spending.
Four hundred.
Three fifty, seven fifty-five is the, is the high.
It's a hundred and eighty-seven percent increase, so that sounds not right.
We are really under a hundred and thirty, I think.
Is there training that you're not getting because you don't have the money?
I, I'll, like, I might see a course that I want to send somebody to, but if it's three hundred dollars, I'm like, sorry, can't go. So there's trainings that we probably should go to, um, like, but we don't, just because, so, I mean, we have eleven hundred dollars in our training budget. That's really.
I looked at the thousand dollars and I says, okay, if I'm gonna, it's a thousand dollars, but if it, I mean, we can get it there. We just cut eighteen.
By, like I said, we, I unfortunately skimp on that because we have the money.
How little it is. But if it's in the budget, then they should go.
We should spend it.
Yeah.
Like last year, we, we, one class was five hundred, like my budget. Okay, I got a hundred and fifty bucks left.
Let's, for now, let's just leave that. We can always come back.
Yeah.
Just feel like I'm fine with it.
Vehicles and equipment?
I think Glenn was asking about dues and meetings. Weren't you, Glenn?
Yeah, but it, but I think the dues, dues and meetings.
They fall under the.
That's the training.
Yeah.
That's the training you're talking about?
Okay, so that's the total.
A hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars.
That's it, you just have to show it under dues and meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, oh, we're good.
Hey, I'm at vehicles and equipment.
Yeah.
I don't see any problem with that.
No, they're all zero percent, uh, variance, level.
Doesn't seem like that's enough for gas, but it's gone down a little bit.
Well, the repairs were quite a bit higher than the budget, so is that a realistic number to keep it at sixty-five hundred?
Well, that varies. Like I said, we had, um, the one car had a heater issue, and it sounds crazy, but the bill's twenty-five hundred after they tore all the, well, we tore the radio equipment out, but they had all the dash apart. They had, so they had to basically go to the inside of the car to get from the bottom to replace it. That's, one bill was really high. I mean, that's not a normal, um, problem. We do have a couple older cars, so obviously the bills have ticked up on that.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it should be more.
We, again.
If you look at the actual, there was nine thousand, eight thousand, ten thousand.
Well, one year out of that, one year we had striping came out of there, which wasn't budgeted for. Um, the one year we bought a car, we stripped two and re-outfitted one, and that bill was thirty-five hundred, so that wiped fifty percent of my budget right out. So we've made some changes on in the future on outfitting cars, on who's going to do it. Um, I think we're safe for the six, I think it's at sixty-five?
Yeah.
I think we're safe, um, outside of you have, you know, we have an accident. I know there's one accident we got to pay for. There's a thousand dollar deductible. We haven't paid yet, so when you pay a thousand dollars here or fifteen hundred for there, that's a large chunk out of that sixty-five hundred. I think overall, our budget's been pretty where it's supposed to be at the, at the end of the year. I don't think we've gone over much.
Yeah, keep getting the free equipment and cars, doing, doing good.
Anything else?
Looks like it's about up to there.
Let's chief go to bed.
Yep.
Well, we hit you pretty hard the first time around.
Yeah.
Look at the bright side. The next time won't be so bad.
I don't think it's, I, I looked at the opposite. I think they were good decisions based on, based on facts. I don't feel like it was whacked. I really don't.
No, yeah, whacked is when someone comes and tells you to take a certain percentage out.
I, yeah, exactly.
Without having.
Take out ten percent and figure it out.
Take, take ten percent and.
We did it based on good decisions, so.
We would rather skip here and there and maintain our level of coverage that we're providing, I guess, if that makes sense.
Very good.
Okay, back up to the select board.
Well, I was wondering.
You calling the constable one? Is that a possible bill basis?
Oh, I didn't know you were there.
Oh, hey, Donnie.
Sure. Hi, been here since seven-thirty.
Hey, thanks for coming.
You were early.
I, I saw Don's iPad. I didn't know that was you.
Sorry about that. I just, I thought this was Zoom only meeting. I would have come up, but I'm here now, so.
No, we're good.
I don't see a problem with it.
Oh, I. No, your budget looks pretty good, Don.
We tried to, uh, as Joe was going, we made some adjustments, um, that two hundred on the communications, the meeting, the travel. We're not using it. Why, you know, why put it in there, trying to be as fair to everybody as everybody else is? The only thing is, you know, as Bill roached the subject, I'm not really clear, and it's too early to say what it'll do for us with radio communications like Bill, or if it can be tagged into, or if we're going to have to do something through Bill as far as having access and stuff. Because to be very clear, without access, you won't get me, because I'm not going out at three in the morning without radio, so. Um, it's something we'll have to take as it goes, but just kind of keep that in the back of the mind like Bill did with what he's thinking. But I don't really have a place to go with numbers and stuff, so it doesn't make sense at this point.
I think, Don, with your call volume, you would just be included right in with our bill, and that would be.
That's right. That's why I figure you and I always work it out back and forth and stuff. It just, at some point, we got to put a little something in there, whatever. We'll talk about it, but this, so they are, we're all on the same page.
Worst case, we give you one hour call numbers and then you're good to go.
Yep.
I, I say we leave the constables where it is.
Yeah, that's good.
Now you can go to bed, then.
All right, I did have one, one quick question, just as a thought, and maybe just the direction the board's going. So when it comes to like, we'll say machinery and equipment, sometimes there's years we don't really need a lot, but there's other years we may have to put like a radio in somebody's car. How are you handling that? Are you working towards like, should we be looking at down the road having like a, a replacement, you know, almost like you do a fire truck and stuff? An encumbered balance or something along that lines to work? So some years, you know, you've done a little bit in there, so you don't keep adding up, just asking.
Is that a capital?
Yeah, so, Donnie, the police department does have a capital reserve fund for vehicles and equipment, and the equipment falls right in there.
That's right.
So, so maybe this year with what's going on, you know, it's a little late in the process, but maybe next year we can talk about that a little bit. So, you know, there's years where we can help bring that down, but yet we're taking care of those times when we maybe do need that or stuff. We try, you know, we're fairly inexpensive for the result of what you get, just thinking outside the box for next year.
Cool.
Good.
Everybody happy?
We're happy. Have a good night there, Don.
Happiest, happiest.
I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
All right, see you later, Don. Thanks for speaking up.
No problem.
Um, select board?
What about the select board salaries?
Flat funded.
But do we, you can't change it?
Uh, well, I'm sorry, I was, I was anticipating.
We can raise it.
Yeah.
You can't raise it. I just feel like it's really volunteer work. Um, yeah, it's, I guess, I haven't had one, but it's guess, nice, I would assume, to get a little check, but if we're really trying to cut, um, I don't know.
Well, we did, we did work for free a couple of years in a row.
I was going to say, good.
If we, if we come back and find that I'm three thousand, six hundred dollars short of that hundred thousand I want taken out of here, I'm with you. But, uh, other than that.
Leave it as a question.
Right, right, for the, for the hours that board members put in.
Then the other thing, the economic development.
That's the one, my question, too.
What's that? Who decided it should be that much, and what's it for?
So the, the board a few, uh, probably a few months ago had talked about, uh, doing a little bit of economic development downtown, partnering with, uh, one of the property owners, um, to kind of subsidize rent for, uh, maybe new business to come into town. Um, the EDC had talked about it. They, they threw the idea of about twelve thousand dollars at this. Um, I whacked it down to eleven-five.
And there's, there's a couple different, like, I think we got the five hundred, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we put the five hundred in there as a placeholder in the last budget for, so that we could be having the discussions about economic development, knowing that we had to figure out what it was we were going to do. So it's, we, it's really money so that you can actually do the work. And, and that other biggest thing that came out of that, and I didn't get a chance to talk with Joe, is time and time again, marketing comes out as the major hits, uh, for what we, in order, we don't do that good a job of, of selling Fairhaven. And some of that could be used in a marketing end. Also, our website is in such, you've heard over and over again, such dire need of rework, trying to find something on there unless you know the, the code. I, I'm, I'm telling you, it's, and I use it all the time, and I still, it's, it's a, it's a by chance. So, so there's, there's a lot of work to be done, and, and I, I would expect someone to come back and say, what? All right, the reason we didn't, you're not going to see, because of this COVID year, we didn't spend the five hundred. We fully expect to, to next year be in a position to go out and make things happen. That number is a number, uh, that, uh, if we can't get things out and moving until mid-year with everyone vaccinated and everything here, could that number be, be cut some because we just wouldn't have time to pull it off? Absolutely. What are you, are you proposing?
I, well, I have a question related to it. Did the two beautification things, I'll call them that, that we talked about, the triangle in front of Stewart's get added in, and potentially a clock for the park? So those are nowhere in here.
You won't see that anywhere in this budget. It's, I was under, under direction of the board, it was supposed to, my original, the original goal was to get it at or below three percent.
Mm-hmm.
Clocks and beautification didn't make the cut.
Well, I'm sure, but, but.
But, but the other, the other, the other element is if you're saying, if we're not successful in coming and getting the, the loan to bring folks in, the different things. I, I don't want to speak for Joe and the rest of the board to say, I'd never say never. We, we look at different, I'd like to think we could get, uh, if, the better chance for the clock and beautification projects is getting some grants that would pay for, uh, and tie it into our historical downtown, but, uh, and that's not, but that's not the eleven-five.
How about she five cut it or that? Not five hundred, five thousand.
Five thousand.
If, if we're talking heads, this would be an easy, I mean.
Right, if we're talking heads, this is an easy eleven thousand five to say, can we, can we give? I'd, I'd like to keep the placeholder there. Um, but, uh, could we take eleven thousand out of that? Because I'm, I'm still looking for a hundred thousand.
That's a good.
And, and we've got eighteen thousand so far. I would, I would ask that we leave five hundred as a placeholder, because we will be back and, and probably the next budget cycle, ask for money, but now's not the time.
But if you think you're going to need it for what you're talking about, I mean, even if you get through a half, if, if you can't get nothing going until the middle of the year.
Well.
So put five thousand in.
Remember, you're a year, you're a year away.
Right, we're a year away. So let's put five, let's put five thousand, yeah.
I can, I think we'll take five thousand.
You can spend that, right?
Absolutely.
But I'm just saying, don't take all of it out. I mean, if it's there for.
There's a little opportunity.
Yeah, it's an opportunity, maybe to get somebody in here, so let's leave it at five, we'll put five thousand in and cut sixty-five hundred of it.
You know, and Reddick is, Reddick, Reddick is going to come and want some money. We'll take that, we'll give them that.
They've, they've sent, they've sent me the invoice.
Well, they did, they.
Yeah, the five hundred dollar advertising invoice.
We get so much out of them.
Yeah, we really do, even when they don't forget us.
I'm so sensitive to that anymore. I saw some emails come out that didn't include Fairhaven, and I blasted something back, it's like, you forgot us.
Yeah.
It just, it was just. It wasn't even about what I was talking about, though.
It, it was just like that, that those free bucks or whatever you want to call it. Pony got it, Castlin got it. They didn't come to Fairhaven at all. You know, I mean, that's, that's something that's going to increase your business. I mean, because people are going to go around locally and start, and spend money.
Well, I didn't mean to go down that rabbit hole, but I can't help it.
Sitting here, biting my tongue.
Is, is there a chance of their representative to the, to, you know, Riddick had more input, like they were there and?
Where did those?
Well, Riddick is no more. The, the Chamber and Riddick combined into one group, and in fairness, when, I think someone talked to Lyle, and it was just a clean miss on, on the dollar, when it was a clean miss. He has heard very strongly that that, that we're awfully disappointed about the clean miss, and I think. On, on, on the dollar, when it was a clean miss, he has heard very strongly that that, that we're awfully disappointed about the clean miss, and I think we'll do better in the future.
A quick personal story. I ordered a birthday cake in Castleton for my grandson, a Worldwide Wrestler's Cake Boxing ring. And I got there and it was 30 dollars. I thought it was gonna be a lot more. And then she said, but here I can give you these 10, 10 bucks and it's 20. And I said, no, I don't want to take the money from you. Oh, no, I get payback. So in my head, I'm automatically thinking. I gotta tell people and I gotta go back there. You know, simple story, but it's too bad that.
If you go into Pizza House. Yeah, over 30 bucks up over there in Castle, then they'll give you 10 dollar tag on it, you know? Yeah, so, I mean. Yep, think about Durfys.
Keep screaming, Joe.
Yeah, I'm extra sensitive now. I'm coming across as emotional at this point.
Well, send them my way.
On select board, uh, just.
Lyle's.
The legal services went up the 8,000, uh, from, we had 6,000 before. We're expecting to, I just wanted to ask the question.
So, um, we, I'm still doing the tax sales myself. There were, there are five right now that, um, as an example, this is, this is not maybe necessarily then, but, um, there are five now, just as the example, that are sitting in probate. That my level of expertise working through probate and then selling a property is not as solid as we might want it to be. So that little bit of extra money is allowing me to call legal for legal advice on saying, how should I handle more complex situations? Um, and that's anticipating that in the coming year.
The other thing that everybody should know, historically, we put all the legal services that were spread through the budget for each, for each, uh, minimum department, uh, uh, delinquent taxes is one, but, um, border civil authority or, uh, borders of adjustment, all, anybody that had legal services. We moved it all up here, so you don't see that in a different place. It's just one, one bucket of money.
If, uh, I guess if you wanted to flat fund that, I would just have to do fewer, uh, difficult tax sales. I think, I think.
I, I just, just a question. I wasn't looking to dig it. I just had a question of what was going on.
If we have to make the herd decisions, this would be one of the easier herd decisions.
When we come back, let's leave it there where it is now, and we go back through it. Because I think if you get in a, if you got a tax sale going on, and it gets to the point where you have to ask somebody. It's better to have the money there so you can, you can go after the money for the taxes. I mean, that's my thinking. I mean, I, I could be out in left field here, but.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Uh, so I'm doing the tax sales myself, so we can't charge legal. Oh, maybe. Let me look into it. Yes. Legal fees I can charge back, not my time, but yes, we can charge back legal fees. So we will get a little bit of that back.
Okay, so let's leave it where it is for now, and then we can go. But the need to cut it will come back. I got a question mark, excited.
And your advertising, I take it is because we held off doing tax sales and we plan on doing quite a few, or in your advertising that, or what's?
That, yeah, and, um, so I'd like to start sending out the, uh, voter's guide this year, which is out of this budget. But that's gonna be a little expensive, so I'd like to, for printing and, and mailing, if we do it like that, um, the voter's guide would come out of that as well. Which again, if, if hard decisions need to be made, that's the easy one to make for, from my chair.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Town manager? Are we doing town manager this time or no?
Oh, yeah.
Yep, yep, we're doing town manager.
Why, um, why is there no travel included?
I was gonna ask that question, too.
I don't go anywhere.
Well, you do.
Well, you might someday.
Maybe.
You're, you're gonna be going to, with Bill to, uh, testify about, uh, about communications.
Yeah, maybe. But, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, it was short money and I have used a little bit in the past, but, uh, typically it's not something that I draw on. It's just not.
Well, 200 dollars isn't a lot of money.
Let's, let's leave the 200 dollars in there.
Yeah. Leave it.
Yep.
I think you should.
Because you'd be traveling for.
You shouldn't be traveling for free. It's, it's, you're doing town business. It's, it's, it's not, not required. Not required that you take a 200 dollar pay cut. Although you can if you want.
Let me ask my wife.
No, no, never mind. That's the wrong way to go for purposes.
When I look on the town manager for salary, and it's the, you know, standard two and, two and a quarter. My initial, I'm gonna try to find the best way to ask this question. When I, when I looked at what we were paying people here in town, I was shocked to find that we're paying people that report to Joe more money than the town manager.
But.
You're not?
You're not, no.
There's multiple ones that are added up?
There, yeah, so my salary comes out of water and sewer, so.
There's another place where I'll see your salary. I feel better now.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm.
When I saw that, I said, wait a minute, it goes against everything. Okay, I.
Hard to figure out if you go look at all budgets.
So, I'm water and sewer, you've got, you're the administrator.
Yeah. Um, I think I am the highest, uh, flat salary, I think the manager is the highest paid.
Then, then I'm, I'm fine. That's the question I had.
Don't broadcast that. I was gonna say, I don't like to admit it, but, yeah, heads need to roll. Who are you gonna start with?
No, I just, yeah, I'm, yeah, good, no more. So we just saved another 6,500, just for those doing, doing town.
Um, well, no.
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 No?
It's 6,300, because we added the 200 back.
Oh, that's right.
Sometimes I can add. Where are we going? Streetlights?
Uh, the next one is municipal building on page three.
Yep, great.
So the copiers on there, that's just because our, um, the cost for that server, I'm sorry, technology?
Yeah.
Technology services.
Let me see why we increased it. Overall, that was, that was flat budget. There's 100,000, about 100,000 sitting in capital reserve, which is not in this line item. This is, the capital reserve is not this. In municipal buildings, there is about 100,000. That money is allocated for a furnace and oh, this is because of the NEMR, our NEMR went up. NEMR was increased last year and tech services for just the bumps in the road we have when the listers can't jump onto the server or, I don't know. I can't access, I don't know, whatever NEMR documents I need. So that's what that increases.
This is just getting this back on, because now it's gonna be right around nine grand.
But I have a question.
Your ear.
We probably, once the server's in there, some of that should go away, correct? No?
I bet you're gonna see nine grand.
No, no, the server was just a, that's just a, just a purchase.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were saying that you were having trouble accessing.
I, it's constantly, there's always somebody that has some kind of technology issue, and it's not necessarily related to the server, but.
Okay.
Sometimes NEMR doesn't operate right or whatever the case may be.
Right, and it was a 500 dollar.
Yeah.
Increase, like, just security.
How come on utilities, it just says water?
It, that's, it's water and sewer.
Just a question.
Yeah.
That's cheaper, that's cheaper in my apartment.
They're not here all the time.
Yeah.
Anything else on that page before we flip over?
Um, so bad news, yes, uh, for municipal building. Um, the state did come back. They're anticipating, uh, we will need to do some borings for the, the fuel that was in the ground. Um, minimum number for a boring was 6,700 dollars.
100.
Yeah, the cost to.
Isn't that this year, this budget?
Mm-hmm, they've, uh, we've talked to them and they've said they'll bump it out till next year, which is nice.
Either way, there's no place for it.
I just wanna say, which do we have in more money in the?
Well, how many borings do you need?
Because this is just for the one, for the one test site. They're gonna bore and they're gonna test. They're just making sure it's not leaching. They want to make sure it's not leached offsite.
So Joe, isn't, isn't that actually this budget?
No, the state, because of COVID, has, uh, bumped it out.
No, but it'll actually be this budget we're working on.
The budget we're working on, not, not come out of the budget we're in. Right, yes.
Or do you have money in the budget we're in?
Joe, it should be in the one we're working on.
It should be the one, that's what I'm saying. It should be in the one we're working on now.
Right, then we're, so we don't have to put it here.
We're, yeah, where, where are you gonna put it?
Yeah, we do.
What, Jeff, when you say we're working on, what do you mean?
This one.
This one in your hand.
This is.
21.
It should be added to this budget that we are.
For 21.
Okay, where is it?
We're gonna spend it in the July 21, 22.
Is that other purchase, is that other purchase services?
That's where something like that would be added, yeah.
6,700 dollars?
And there's no chance that there's money left over in the budget we're in currently, that, so you don't have to put it here? See, I don't want, I, I mean.
Time to have that conversation is probably in the spring.
Right.
Right, but, but I'm, but I'm still sitting here saying, I'm trying to save all the money I can right now. I, I, I don't want to have a surplus come in July and say, geez, we could, we could have taken that 6,700 for the boring out of the old budget. I'm just asking a question.
We can.
So a, a small surplus is not the end of the world, but, um, uh,
We can shoot.
We could do it into the, uh, reserve account. Because you know, you know it's coming, right?
It's, it's coming, yes, um.
I'm with you, Jeff.
If it isn't something that's a question mark, it's actually gonna happen. You just don't quite know when.
This is gonna happen. 6,700 dollars is the low end, uh, of the estimate. It could be as high as 10,000.
If they find some fuel in the first test for, do they say, yep, you need to do a second? Just see how widespread it is?
Um, the, the email I got said, maybe, but she doesn't anticipate that. It was, it was a very, very small amount.
How come we don't have a, a brownfield set up anyways? I was always concerned about that, a brownfield. I mean. That you have to set money aside to begin with before you can even pull a tank. I don't know why we didn't have to. Maybe municipalities are attempt from that, but if you're pulling a tank anyplace else. You gotta have the money there ahead of time.
I know, we didn't ask for it.
That's, that's hindsight, so never mind. Um, so what do we want to put? We want to put this in the reserve account? At least, at least seven grand or something like that, or?
If, if we want to roll the dice and just see how much we have at the end of the year?
No.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't.
I think the options are we either find it out of this budget, or it must be in this budget.
Right, exactly.
It doesn't make sense to put it in the reserve account if we know that it's gonna be in this budget or in the current budget.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I'm just saying. Well, it doesn't really matter. If you're gonna put 7,000 dollars someplace, you're gonna put it someplace. It doesn't matter if it's in the reserve account or if it's in the, or right here and.
Well, it's a one-time purchase, so it kind of messes with your budget to put it in there.
Exactly. You're not gonna spend it.
You gotta have, you gotta show it somewhere.
You don't have to show it specifically. Okay.
Well, I, I, I kinda. So you're, you're leaning towards reserve account is what you're saying, right, Jeff?
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna bump your percentage up to leave it in the general fund budget.
Right, and we're gonna struggle.
Well, the reserve account's a general fund too, so.
That's true, that's true.
No, I, I think since it's exactly like Jeff said, it is a one-time purchase, I think it would go just in, in the line item. You put it there.
But I think you could, I think you could do 5,000, because you can probably find another 2,000 in that building's account, yeah?
As of right now, there's still, in other purchase services, there's still 21,500 there in this year's budget.
What else are we using that for at this point?
What comes out of that? Let me see, let me see what's supposed to come out of that. That's.
Cause we spent, we spent 894 dollars out of it this year, so far.
So it would be. Um, so for example, if I was to put, uh, just repairs to the, repairs to the building, um, electrical, we added a light socket back here. We had to add power to the front door. Um, it's that kind of thing. It's small repairs.
Outside, outside, okay.
Alarm maintenance, uh, is a specific item that comes out and, uh, cleaning.
What about, what about that deal with the door?
The deal with the door.
With electronic door.
That was, so I, I saw a guy, he knocked on the door because he couldn't get in, um, then I felt awful about it, but, uh.
Is there something we have to do?
Nobody has mandated it at this point, but it's something that should be done. If there was, if we were got, get to the end of the year and there was 3700 dollars left, um, that's what I would have purchased.
All right, just a question, that's all.
Yeah, but no, nobody came down and said, okay, do it.
So I'm still trying to figure out the 6,700, 7,000. What do we?
I, I think Jeff said if you drop five in other purchase services, we should be able to find another two.
Should bring that 3,000 up to eight?
Yes.
That's better money, though.
Going the wrong way on that one, but, but I mean, it is, we didn't foresee it. I, I just, we gotta fix it.
It's gonna happen. It's easier to have it there than it is to try to find it.
And, and this is not, I actually just got that email today, so it's not like this was something that's sitting out there.
So we're adding 5,000 dollars there.
Yep, right, yes.
Tell them I had pretty well figured out.
Anything else?
And this one, five was okay?
We did police departments. We did constables. We have streetlights. We're at 9:30, so.
Well, streetlights, there's nothing there anyway.
No.
The, the rest of it was pretty easy.
I think the rest will go real quick.
Yeah, they, yeah, they.
Cemetery expenses.
Well, streetlights are just gonna go okay with it, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I didn't have.
Cemetery expenses.
We're down 1,000 dollars.
How can we hate that?
Down 900 dollars, so.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
So far?
Yep.
Okay. Airpark is the same.
Mm-hmm.
Public health inspector.
So, so for this, under health inspector, uh, the inspector's asking for a 200 dollar increase in his salary.
When was the last time you had an increase, John?
Well, I didn't get the increase I got last year. Never showed up by day. So never.
So, so there, there hasn't been. When I look at the 15, it's been there for, forever?
We always spend whatever.
Whatever we put there.
I say, I say leave the 200 in there.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We can always.
Is there still, is there still an assistant?
No.
That's the, that's the reason why. I was gonna say, well, we're at the 200. We still haven't given you an assistant.
Yep.
You're really only going up 140 because you're saving 60 dollars in travel.
Yeah, there you go.
Animal control?
Looks good to me.
The, the cost of rabies clinic did go up.
50.
50, that's, that's, that would be well missed.
No, I'm upset, thank you.
People were upset that we didn't do it this year.
Yeah, we couldn't because.
But we couldn't because of.
Do we ever use, like, the building down the transportation of all the animals they bar?
We do, but not very often because of Facebook and social media, we're able to reunite them pretty quickly, so.
Yeah.
I just have.
And last but not least, judgments and damages. You got three on page nine.
Special events, right. Special events, right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get out of here.
Well, I thought the concerts in the park the money was there already for next year. 'Cause we encumbered the money from this year.
Right.
We put it in a reserve fund.
I think-
You have to pay that, you made that contract.
We did, we did pay that contract.
But it was two, but it was only two, it was two thousand something like that.
So the, the board, so the, it's the money that you're sitting in this year, the board will have to vote to move that money to a reserve account. We just can't cut a check.
I thought we already did. I thought that's what we did when, when, uh-
I think we said we were going to when we had to.
Yeah, and it's, it's the same with the Memorial Day parade. If the board wants to move that money to an account for recreation.
Why wouldn't we put it in the account for the same thing it was in there for before?
A Memorial Day parade.
Why wouldn't you do, move the money for next year's Memorial Day parade, next-
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
So, so there's not a Memorial Day account? There's not a Memorial Day reserve account, so you would move it to recreation?
Where'd the money go now?
It's, it's still sitting.
Well, the budget, yeah, but the budget ended in July one. From the money from, that we, that we-
That's the money that we're talking about. It's, so we're gonna go through and we're gonna vote. Oh, no, that money's gone.
It's already been spent.
No, that money's gone.
Where'd it go?
Well, it's into the, it's into the carry-
It, it's in the carry forward, so that money, it's-
Already been spent.
Yeah, it's, it's in your reserve.
You can still take it out.
Yeah, you can still take it out, which, you guys don't call it capital reserve here. Your fund balance, it's sitting in your fund balance.
So, on that, and even on this concerts in the park, we still should have fifty-five hundred dollars in there.
It's, it's not that it's in there, it's, it's, it is, it's sitting in the capital, it's in your fund balance.
Where'd it go? I mean, come on, we didn't spend it.
It's, it's in fund balance.
So, so really, then, like, like Memorial Day, if the twenty-five hundred dollars is still there, you just take it out this year, if it's there.
Just vote at the end of this budget cycle, we, uh, do the voters wish to take twenty-five hundred dollars out of the fund balance to carry, carry the Memorial Day grave over to the next year.
Also, they, uh-
But if they-
Isn't it gonna be the general fund carryover, not the fund balance?
Fund balance is carryover.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right, we're talking about the same thing?
It's there.
Okay, but-
Okay.
Right there, you're gonna say seventy-five hundred dollars. 'Cause you're gonna put fifty-five, you've, you've got fifty-five hundred dollars left from last year's concert in park, and you got two hundred and fifty dollars from, or twenty-five hundred dollars from Memorial Day. Right?
Yeah.
We're spending it twice and it hasn't been spent.
That gives us over twenty thousand, obviously.
Only, only per year, though. That's a-
That's okay.
It's, well-
Well, it doesn't exactly do what Glenn's-
It doesn't take the hundred thousand out from the base. I, I hear you.
Yeah, but, I mean-
It's gonna come back, that's all I'm saying.
It'll come back next year, it'll come back next year, but right now, if the money's there, why are we putting, adding this much back in there again?
Wouldn't you just have to add some, Joe?
Well, is it actually there, Joe? Or when you, when you factor in, like, the highway overage, is it gone?
Is it, is it gone? All right, that's, that's the reason I-
Oh, two separate funds, Jeff.
I was gonna say, we-
Highway, highway overage came out of the, out of the-
Highway fund.
Yeah, the highway fund balance. Capital is the O-one-O, um, fund balance, there's like a hundred and seventy-one thousand sitting there.
So, where-
Yes, you, we can, we can move that money.
I'm just saying, I mean-
On a one-time basis, yeah.
A one-time.
Yeah, because we saved it from last year.
So we can slash the two thousand and five.
If only voter approval could take anything out of that fund balance and redirect it.
It would have to be go through, oh, yeah.
Voter approval, yeah.
The, the tough, the tough thing, Carol, though, is it's, it's easy to cut it out now. When it comes back next year, we're gonna say, we need to add this in, this ten thousand dollars in, who's gonna say, yeah?
Everybody, I think. We'll be ready for parades and concerts. It's gonna be essential.
Where's that money gonna go?
The problem is, the problem's gonna really, the ten thousand dollars hits you in your percentage.
The point is, if you take it out and you show it as a three, three system-
You're gonna have a tough time doing the budget next year.
When we add it back in, it's gonna be impossible.
That's, that's the one.
And is it gonna show on the revenue side?
You're, you're better off to use that ten thousand to offset your municipal building boring and not put that in, because it's a one-time deal. And just leave these events the same.
That's a good idea. I, I get what you're saying there.
And not get yourself back here.
Can you do that?
I heard what you said, yeah.
Can you do that?
It, it-
Well, you'll have to get voter approval.
The difference is, is that the, the money doesn't stay in each line item, it goes into the ma, it goes into that, into that, uh, we can't-
That's the problem when you can't encumber money.
You don't encumber money like that. You can, you can only encumber it for like two months now.
You can't even do that anymore, you're a accountant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well-
Because we used to encumber it and spend it, like, the highway budgets and stuff like that for the first two months of the year.
So it, it stops being line item numbered and becomes one-
Okay, so where is this gonna show in the revenue side? Is it gonna show on the revenue side, or we put?
It'll show on the fund balance.
It should already be displayed.
So, the, the, the money that hasn't been spent, there's, the money that hasn't been spent, there's a bank account sitting there. Here's your budget, and you have a thousand dollars left over in your budget, that goes here in your bank account. And then it piles up year over year, or it goes down.
What's that money used for?
It's so-
We bought down the, the rate.
Borings would be a good example, right?
With the, with the exception of the highway department, right?
Go ahead.
He's kidding.
I'll wait.
We're gonna talk-
I'm just asking where this money-
It's like, it's like a doggone job back here.
I'm just asking where the money is from the concerts and the money from the Memorial Day.
It's in that big pot.
It's in your big pot of money.
So, and then that just sits there and you don't use it for anything else?
At the end of this conversation, when we get into the warning for the town to vote on, we'll, we'll say, we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in our pot of money. Would the town of Fairhaven move five thousand for this project? Two thousand for this project and one thousand for this project? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, doesn't it scary to have that kind of money sitting aside and we're scrounging on a budget?
It does, and there was, in the first, um, budget packet that I sent, there was, um, description of what that money, I had proposed to use that money, 'cause it shouldn't be sitting there. That's, that's tax money that-
Well, we, yeah, we are, we are a tax beast, basically.
Yeah.
We save, we save money and over- But this didn't all come in one year. This hundred and something thousand didn't come from just one, one budget.
No, it's-
It's accumulating, but the, the boards have given, used, used some to, for projects.
This is where, this is where a million dollars showed up that time too, right?
Well, no, a lot of that was revenue, believe it or not.
So anyways, so I, as long as I know where it is, and you're gonna use that money for our drill testing out here.
So for-
So I won't need to take, go ahead.
Right?
So if we wanna use the money out of the, the pot, we have to ask the voters to vote on it.
So that's what we're gonna do, though.
That's what-
I mean, that's what I think.
That's what you wanna do.
We haven't decided that yet.
I haven't decided yet.
We haven't got there yet, but-
That'd be better than putting the sixty-seven hundred dollars in our budget.
Well, you put five thousand dollars right now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We can peel that back.
We can take that back out.
Yeah, you, you could if you wanted.
In the interest of moving it along, can we, 'cause we're gonna look at this again. I just wanna say, can we take that five thousand that we had to take back and, and say, no, we're not, we're gonna, and then put the proposed word together. We can turn around and say after, no, that's a, that was a great idea that one night, and we decided when we look at the last time, can change, but right now-
I agree.
Well, let's, and that moves us forward.
Well, it gets us, it gets us out of special events and it gets us to judgments and damages.
And we'll leave those right there, yeah.
And we're good with that? Everybody comfortable? Sure that a thousand dollars is enough, but that's all for tonight.
That's it, nice job.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're good, yeah, we did, we did double.
We're gonna take that five thousand back out of here, right?
Yeah, I, I pulled that.
Okay.
So that puts us-
What's that make for an auction?
Uh, we'll bring it to the next team.
Uh, you're-
About twenty?
Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five? How many here?
Sixty-five.
Quarter of the way there.
That wasn't a bad effort.
No, I mean, it was.
Okay, folks, let's move on. Um, anything in the parking lot that needs to be spoken of?
I, I don't have any, same right now.
I'm not gonna give you much a chance. Board roundtable.
Um, I was approached by a towns person this year about the crosswalks at downtown, the one, you know, the two, the one across from Dunkin' Donuts and the one right at the start of Main Street there. Um, she's very concerned that they're really dangerous. They haven't been painted in two years, so says she. And she wants to know if they're gonna be done before winter.
What's the painting?
Yeah, the two crosswalks.
No.
And, so I'm supposed to get back to her?
There's a lot of stop signs, right?
No, because-
No, um-
I know we have improvements coming, but that's way down the road.
I thought we were working on this. I thought they-
I thought we were too.
The public works guys ran and told us they were working on painting crosswalks.
On the list.
They, they were. They got the ones, uh, near the schools, um, but no, the ones downtowns didn't get, they didn't get painted. Uh, I did talk to Aaron. We, we have been talking about downtown since we've talked about the sidewalks. Next summer, we're gonna spend, and he started already, we're gonna spend additional time downtown. There's some signs you don't see, there's some weeds that just grow up in the bad spots, and then there's sidewalk, uh, crosswalks.
Is there any reason we can't paint those sidewalks now?
I mean, it's, it's winter time now, Jeff. I would hate to get out there with some paint and then spray it down and have it not stick. It would just be-
You've gotten about a week and a half of good weather, I think.
It would, I would, I would hate to waste the guy's time and the money on some paint and just have it be just a little moist, so that way it just didn't work. I would love to do it, don't get me wrong. I wish we had the time, but it's-
Yeah, I mean, she expressed her concern that they were doing, uh, the same work just a few feet away somewhere else down, outpainting, and didn't understand why it couldn't all have been done for safety's sake at the same time.
They did in front of Laundromat, but never across the street.
They, they did, they started.
Yeah.
So-
Same person who came to me and-
Um, next spring, next summer?
Uh, next summer, we're gonna do, there's gonna be more extensive cleanup down there. Yeah, it, it has, uh, kinda gone downhill, so you're looking at signs and trimmings on trees and weeds near everything and, um, crosswalks painted. We're gonna get that done before Memorial Day. That's the goal.
So let's, can we, can we just have a breakdown of what, I mean, maybe Aaron can give us a, a breakdown of what his summer schedule looks like? And how, how he's gonna get all that stuff done?
Right, 'cause-
'Cause it didn't get done this year, so let's, let's lay it out.
Yeah, and I mean, not to, not to keep leaning on it, but we are short-staffed and we did lose the DPW director as soon as, as soon as summer hit.
Yeah, he didn't do it either, though, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, um, so-
No, I'm not blaming Aaron.
No, 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 I know.
I wanna know Aaron's plan for next year.
Okay.
There's a lot of work didn't get done this year, or a lot of half-assed done. I'm sorry, that's the way it is.
I just think when people raise a safety concern, I wanna get back to them in the, the right way. No blame, just what's the plan?
No, no, yeah, no, I know. And, yeah, we, it's very, everybody's very weak.
That's it.
In our-
I'm trying to think of-
I'm trying to read my writing.
In the original budget. In our public works department budget. I know we changed it, but we were told that that mowing machine was sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Where'd they get that number?
Uh, I think that come from Young's.
I was down at Young's and had, to, to, the amount he gave him was thirteen thousand dollars. So we're, I guess my, my concern is, did we just tack thirty-five hundred dollars onto it so that there's more money in their budget?
No, we wouldn't do that. I wouldn't expect him to do that.
'Cause he cornered me down there. He said, 'cause he saw it on television, or he read it in the paper or something. He said, where the hell did he get that number? He said, I'll show you the paperwork. It was thirteen thousand dollars.
The owner?
Yeah.
I can't believe that. But I'll, I'll ask.
All right, I'm just telling.
We don't, we don't put fluff.
There's no reason for him to tell me anything different. I mean, why would he tell me anything?
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
I'll look into it.
Day's pretty straight up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I know, I'm not saying.
If he comes out and says, or approaches one of us with that, something, something ain't right.
And then, uh, where's the white cruiser, the one that got smashed?
Uh, the insurance company totaled that and they towed it out.
We didn't get the radios out of, we didn't get the lights out of it or anything?
We got everything out of it.
Well, the question why I'm asking is because I've been told by a number of people that have seen the car, the car hadn't been inspected for six months.
The cruiser?
The white, the Wrangler, that hadn't been inspected for six months. Because it wouldn't pass inspection. I'm just wondering why they run any equipment if it's not inspected. That's my question.
I'll have to ask.
Okay.
I mean, it's, uh, I don't know if it was inspected or not, but I'll, I'll have to ask.
And then, the other thing I'm a little disturbed about, why, what did it cost us for Park to come in and pave these few sections?
Six thousand?
Six thousand dollars. All that could've been done by our men. Every bit of it could've been done. And we'd have, we'd have bought a load of hot mix. You know? You don't have to be a rocket scientist to put down hot mix. And they're small, they weren't anything big. It wasn't like they come in here and put down two loads of hot mix with a mix that's, they use less than a load for everything they done here. And I think six thousand dollars is a lot of money when we could've done ourselves. That's, that's where I'm going back to what I'm saying. We're not getting our work done around here, and a lot of our work is, isn't taken care of, isn't completed right out front here. See, there's a, there's, right beside that sidewalk, if somebody steps off that sidewalk, they're gonna break their ankle, because they never filled a hole. You know, again, we're paying top dollar for all this stuff and we're not getting our services, I don't think. And that goes right back to the sidewalks. There was days that they could've painted the sidewalks instead of some of the other projects that they done. And I just think that priorities aren't being done. That's it, that's all I got.
So, I'm- We have three full-time DPW workers.
We have four down there.
I have three full-time DPW workers. I have one guy that's in charge of the transfer station, the water plant, and the sewer plant, and DPW. He is stretched thin. The three guys I do have, they have to do everything else. They have to maintain the sidewalks, they have to maintain the, the roads, they have to maintain the buildings, they have to maintain the parks, they have to fix the equipment as it breaks down. To say that nothing is getting done is just a genuine, straight-up lie.
No, I don't believe it.
These guys, I, I hear about, I hear about choosing priorities. I've had complaints about patching needs to be done across the town. We chose to do that, and I got calls about, hey, let's take that fountain out of the park. What's going on with that fountain?
That should've been, that, that was a priority that should've been taken care of in October.
Let's scoop these guys away from the paving projects and put them on doing something that can be done later. This is why we're prioritizing. This is why we're not just cherry-picking the guys up and throwing them there today, and cherry-picking them up and throwing them there today. I have thirty years of projects that are behind. We have thirty years of projects that need to be done.
There's still things such as sidewalks, such as crossings, and again, the fountain, the park, that should've been taken out in October. There's no, it takes them two hours to take that fountain out.
And it's two hours that they couldn't have been doing the paving? This, this-
I agree with you completely, Joe, and I guess that's why I didn't think the Scott Hill thing should be a priority to do that ditching if we didn't have time.
Yeah, well, it's, it's one of those things, do we wanna pave now? Now that that's complete, now we can pave when that comes.
Yeah.
But honestly, the, with three guys, and then we're talking about cutting heads without staff.
I'd like to point out that I am not talking about cutting heads.
Three, three guys, it, it, it just grinds it to a halt, and I, I know I'm passionate about this, but these guys are trying real hard, and we just keep hitting them, and we just keep hitting them, and.
I, I feel like it kinda goes back to that prioritization list that we had, and I don't think we get into these rubs if, if we, not every little thing, but the major, whatever you think, or whatever that's major things, that if, if, if we could see that, we wouldn't have this sort of conflict, which is too bad to have.
That's, that's.
I get it, it takes time, but it doesn't have to be perfect, just jot it down and.
But they gotta do something out front here, somebody is gonna break their ankle or something. But that's been like that since, oh, May?
Well, that's, I mean, we're waiting for the grant funding to finish up, so we can fit this whole project.
But they can fill the hole in, Joe, so somebody doesn't fall. It's right on the edge of the sidewalk.
I'm sorry, I'm very passionate about this.
Well, I'm sorry, too, but you know something?
I really see guys trying hard.
I ran a business for thirty-five years, just like what we're doing here in the town. I worked for a town for twelve or thirteen years, we had a hundred and twenty-two miles of road, and we had four people. And we had parks, just like you have here, we had everything else we had to do.
I, I see guys trying real, real hard.
We only got three guys down there, why do we have five trucks down there?
I, I see guys trying real hard, Joe, is what I'm saying. And, and.
I don't think anybody's saying that they're not trying hard. I, I get they're, they're working, I think, we just wanna, I think some priorities may need to shift.
I, I think what Carol's saying is the old, it's what I've been asking for, for a hundred years, and it's not just you, it's, it's every town manager ever been on the board with. If we knew what was going on every month, and we could look at that, and at least know when people ask us why they're in the crosswalk, no, well, they're not, they're working on this, they're gonna try to get that, if they're not, it's gonna be next year. But at least we know, and if there's something that is, is blatantly out of whack, we can talk about it here up high level, and then you can deal with it, you know, you, you're making decisions on what's gonna happen in the town. It's not, it's not us, but we get, we get the overview, and we get the people from town who expect, who think we have control.
Well, it's not to micromanage in any way, it's just to be on the same page and be able to support what those things are.
And, and then organizational setup like that is not a bad thing, it just gives you, everybody knows where you're going. And, you know, we may not have picked up, I don't remember, but somebody might have said, hey, geez, you better throw that, that fountain in sometime in October instead of November. It, it, it's a simple thing, and it's a, and it's, you know, we're, we're harping on it because it's, it's an example, but, um, so.
Well, you also just don't forget things, things don't slip through the cracks.
Right.
If there's a list of things that happened in May.
Right, right.
They just happen.
Yeah, and, and, and then everybody knows that there's gonna be X amount of time, it's gotta be on the cemetery, and that kind of thing like that, and you just, it rolls, your point is well-taken, there's only, you know, there's only a certain amount, it's a hundred and twenty hours with three people. You know, so, we get that, but we need to know where they are, where they are.
They're the ones that should actually be making the list, and maybe they feel better about it, so they can say, in May, we've gotta do thirty hours in the cemetery, or whatever. And they won't feel pulled and, they're gonna be pulled, cause things are gonna happen, but, you know, it, it adds some order to their life, I would think. I don't know, that's.
Getting back to roundtable, I don't have anything.
I, I got a couple.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, I got a couple things, just, uh, did Rasmussen come in and talk to you about his water? He wanted a water, um, I think it was for watering his garden or something. He, I said, I told him why we couldn't do anything, and, and he had an answer that I will briefly explain to you, that he was, he wanted to use his apartment that he didn't use all year, wasn't occupied all year. I, I think you just talk, talk to him, get the, get the, I don't think it's legitimate, but it's, it's worth just talking to him and see if he's, if he's got something that he could do with that, I, I don't, I told him anything, it's, it's valuable, but I figured a phone call will go a long way.
Yeah.
Where are we in general with collections, tax, taxes, water, sewer? I, I, I'd like to have an idea in case they do a stimulus, and that, cause one of the things they're gonna do, if they do a stimulus, it's gonna be municipalities, and we should be there if we need it.
Yeah, uh, no, uh, our taxes and water have been coming in pretty steady. The, the last go-around with water, with threatening to shut off water, um, most people came in and paid. I think there were twelve outstanding, um, that were really kinda what I'll call in the red zone, where they have, like, the trailer park owes something like thirty thousand dollars or something. This guy down here on West Street, he still owes his twenty-five thousand from years ago. Uh, but no, for the most part, taxes are coming in pretty steady, and so is water.
Okay, what do we have on the books for, for, um, help taxes, uh, back taxes?
We're up a little bit, aren't we?
It was two-fifty, was it?
That's, that's almost double that, or, right?
No, no, it, it's, it's pretty consistent, most, so what, what happens is we'll sell the, we'll sell the people that, or threaten to sell the people that are, um, that owe so much. And then there's still like these five that are sitting there with dead people that have been on the books for three years. So it goes up and down a little bit, but there seems to be a consistent chunk that sit there, and then we sell the rest. And then they come back on the list next year, so it seems, it's pretty consistent.
Yeah, but two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, somebody's gotta make that money up in their budget.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand we don't have. And so you talk about our increase in our taxes, well, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars being brought back in, take care of it, it'd make a big difference.
Yes, it would.
I just think we should be prepared if there, if you think we're gonna, we're gonna need something, and it, for, you know, just be ready for it. And then one other thing, and then I'll leave it, when you get talking about that, that crack in the, in the water, in the water line, that is from the pond to, okay.
It's not the, it's not the pipe that draws the water, it's the, it's the outer shell, it's the pipe that the, that the.
Pipe goes through.
The pipe goes through, yeah.
It's, it's the big concrete. It's the tunnel.
It's the tunnel, thank you, it's the tunnel that the line goes through.
You know, there's like a big hobbit door?
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, well, all right, that's not, that's not gonna do what I wanted to do. No, no, if we had to change the, the drop or anything like that, um, the point was, we were nine feet away from, nine feet of drop away from being able to run a, run a generator from our water, from our water to, uh, to actually produce electricity. So we were only off by nine or eleven feet, I can't remember, but it was something not very consequential.
Why couldn't they add?
Well, it, the, the expense of, the expense of, of changing the level didn't, didn't justify it unless, of course, we had to change the level. Then we could find a way to drop it nine more feet, or ten more feet, and then you run a, then you can run a, uh, generator before the water's even touched.
What's the depth of that right there?
I'm not sure. But anyways, that, that's, it's not what I thought it was, so, okay, that's all I got.
Silly question on that, but why couldn't, why couldn't they just have a well driller come in and punch a new line right up through, from the plant, and not mess with the tunnel?
I, I think that's, that's one of the options.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we're, we're reaching out to some folks that, who know more about this than we do.
I mean, it's basically an Artesian well, right, to drill an angle like that up into the pond?
Just for the, uh, yeah, I guess. It's just, it's just gravity feed right out the pipe, so, yeah.
But you'd have to have it come in, the plant, the same place, correct?
Yeah.
But that's just a matter of hooking on the pipe someplace?
But if the, if, okay. I'm just wondering if, if it's, the pipe itself isn't leaking, correct?
No, it seems to be the tunnel, right, Joe?
It's the tunnel. Which makes it more exciting.
Is that, is that a concrete tunnel, or is it a?
Concrete field.
It is concrete.
Okay, uh, financial reports? Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Uh, I've got nothing.
I knew that, honest, I did.
But I, I have the, I have the financials, though.
Good.
Uh, checkbook balance is six-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Um, and motion to pay the payroll warrant, thirty thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. And motion to pay the general fund warrant, seventy-four thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, um, we have an executive session?
Okay, I'll make a motion to go into executive session for solar contract review, one BSA three thirteen A one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
It's just ten o'clock.